Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call this plane zoning board meeting to work at 7:00. Can I have everyone please stand for pledge of allegiance?
Pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Pardon, notice, now this meeting pursuant to the Open Public Need Act has been given by the clerk to the following man. Post it on the board in your department's office and email it to the retrospect and the current post. Just have a roll call.
Vice Chair, Ms. Gushen.
Here.
Mr. Benowal.
Here.
Ms. Flannery.
Here.
Mr. Roson.
Here.
Ms. Walker.
Here.
Mr. Rowan.
Here.
And Mr. Bach.
Here.
We see Ms. Walker in a place of anyone.
Absolutely, yes.
If, okay.
Candy cats.
Yes.
Candy?
Yes. Okay, I have approval for the minutes for the September 28 meeting. Make a motion.
Make a motion to approve the minutes for the second.
Motion made by Mr. Benowal, second by Mr. Roson. All business.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, this is a resolution regarding 10 East Clemens Bridge Road. This was a, came before us at our last meeting and we granted a conditional use approval for, for the applicant for a cannabis dispensary. I prepared a resolution which was reviewed by Mr. Del Duca. He made some minor changes which I approved, so this motion, we can put a motion this evening to pass this resolution.
Lack of motion to approve Resolution 22-18.
I make a motion to approve the bearings.
Second? Second. Okay. Motion made by Mr. Benowal, second by Ms. Gushen.
Do you have a roll call?
Yes, it's roll call.
Okay, let me try to remember who was here at this time. Mr. Rockley.
Yes.
Ms. Gushen.
Yes.
Mr. Benowal.
Yes.
I don't think Ms. Flannery was here.
Yes.
You were here, and is that enough?
Me.
Ms. Roson.
Yes. That is enough.
Yeah, okay. The second resolution, Mr. Chairman, is regarding our determination that an application for a conditional use approval is incomplete regarding the applicant, Green Hasgard, no I'll say. This would just call for a motion to memorialize that decision.
I'll make a motion. Second?
Second.
Motion made by, motion made by Mr. Roson, second by Ms. Gushen.
Do we need a roll call?
Yes.
Mr. Rockley.
Yes.
Ms. Gushen.
Yes.
Mr. Benowal.
Yes.
And Mr. Roson.
Yes. Okay, new business, application 22-07A. Application of 10 East Clemens Bridge Road, block 112, blocks 12, 12.01, and 12.04 for site plan. As you may be aware, this application has already received a conditional use. It advocates for site plan only.
All right. Why don't we swear your folks in now?
Okay.
Anybody that's going to give testimony this night, this evening, on behalf of this application, if you please stand and raise your right hand.
So, yeah, go ahead, thank you.
Do you solemnly swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give this board this evening as far as I know, to the best of your knowledge?
Yeah, I do like to do.
And for the record, Mr. Chairman, Steve Bach.
Steve Bach, yeah.
And just so the record's clear, the people you had sworn, the Brian Cleary, engineer, Matthew Holcomb, my client, Sam Agresta, our planner, and Nathan Mosley, our traffic engineer, but you'll be happy to hear that my only plan with this tonight is Brian Cleary, although the others will be your answer questions, as may be necessary. And the reason that I'm only planning, Mr. Cleary, to testify is because we were here a month ago for this application, and this property, which is 10-20 East Clemens Bridge Road, we were here on September 28 for conditional use approval. And as Mr. Rowan said, the applicant proposes to operate a Class V recreational retail cannabis dispensary at the subject property, which is directly across Clemens Bridge Road, I 'm sure you have it correctly. And that is shown on the aerial exhibit that I've marked Exhibit A1, which I've handed out. Actually, Exhibit 2. You'll see on Exhibit A1, which is the first page of the exhibits that I've handed out, and if anyone wants copies of the exhibits, I have extras here on the seat. We're in, of course, in Borough Hall. The subject property is directly across Clemens Bridge Road, try not to block anyone. Property is deep, goes back roughly parallel with the bike and the bus, St. Clair Road here. And when we were here last month, we explained to you that Cottonmouth is a proposed recreational cannabis dispensary, and we provided testimony through Mr. Holcomb, who's going to operate this facility, as to what that cannabis, cannabis dispensary will do. We provided testimony from Susannah Short, talked about some of the regulatory requirements for a cannabis dispensary, and we went off through that. Last month, it was about the use. It was a conditional use approval because you have an ordinance that states that a recreational cannabis dispensary is a conditional use in this location, and when you're a conditional use, the ordinance sets forth specific conditions that the applicant must meet. And the purpose of last month's meeting was to determine if we meet all those conditions, and you voted that we do meet all those conditions, and you just adopted a resolution memorializing that vote. When we applied for that approval, we also applied for a site plan waiver. This is an existing building, existing parking lot under site work, and we were proposing to, we asked you originally to waive the necessity for site plan approval, even though we're changing the use from a professional office to this dispensary. Your professionals, specifically Mr. Bach, asked us to submit a site plan. We agreed, so we told you on September 28 that we were withdrawing our request for a site plan waiver, and that we would come back for site plan approval. And hence, we're back. That's why we're here tonight. The approval that we seek is site plan approval for this proposed cannabis dispensary. Again, the use is now considered permitted because we meet all the conditions, and we're here to review site plan. And as you know, as land use for site plan application, the purpose of that review is to determine if the application complies with all the applicable standards in your land development ordinance, including your zoning ordinance and site plan ordinances, you know, your standards regarding all the site work, the parking lot, the paving, the landscaping, et cetera, and of course, all the zoning requirements, like coverage, setbacks, and the like. We received Mr. Bach's letter dated October 19th, and I thank him for his thorough review of the application, and as Mr. Bach's letter confirms, we meet all of your ordinance requirements as it relates to this use, site plan requirements, zoning requirements. There are a few existing nonconformities that are outlined in Steve's letter, but they're not, again, they're existing, they're not proposed. We do not propose any new variances, nor do we propose to increase the extent of any nonconformity. So that's why we're here, that's the limited purpose for which we're here. We did submit a site plan that I've marked as Exhibit 8.2, that Brian Cleary, the Paddock Group, prepared, and he's here tonight, he's going to stand up in a moment, and testified. That is shown on the board now, and that is an aerial showing the existing property, showing the Black Horse Pike at the bottom, and Clemens Bridge on the left, as you look at this plan. And that shows some of the landscaping changes and other changes that were proposed. One thing I want to point out, because this was the subject, there's some discussion last month, and that is St. Clair Road, a very unique situation. St. Clair Road, if you, where's the north part, top of the page? So, yeah, north is to the left, so east is at the top of the page here, okay? We're going to assume north is here, east is at the top. So running north to south is St. Clair Road, and it goes over to Plaza. But St. Clair Road stops right here, you can't see it from where I'm pointing, but there's a green line there on your exhibit, and that's the property lot. And everything from where my finger is to Clemens Bridge Road, which is roughly where the rear of the building is, the Clemens Bridge Road, is part of this private property, although it's just an extension of the street, practically speaking. So that's on this property, and there is a driveway there today. A few of the comments that Mr. Bach made was, he asked us to consider some modifications and restrictions on access, and we've agreed to that. Specifically, we've agreed that this driveway to the west, closest to the Black Horse Pike, on Clemens Bridge, that will restrict left-hand turns out of that, will prohibit left-hand turns out of that driveway. And this driveway, which I'm just going to generically call St. Clair, even though it's really a private driveway, we're going to have just exiting movements, right out and left out. And then another change that was asked, and Mr. Cleary will correct me if I have any of this wrong, is right here in the rear of the building, to the south of the building, where the dispensary will be. Cars today can go out there and either turn right and go south on St. Clair Road, or go left and go to Clemens Bridge. We've agreed to install signs that says no right turn, so that customers of this dispensary, if they want to go east of Clemens Bridge, they'll take a left, go out to Clemens Bridge and turn right, and they won't go down St. Clair and go down that road in an effort to just reduce impact. Again, the use is permitted, and we're trying to do what we can to improve, you know, the interaction and reduce impact to the neighbors. So, otherwise, Mr. Bach's letter, with a few exceptions that we'll get into in Mr. Cleary's testimony, and it's very few, we agree with all the comments in his letter. There were a couple of things relating primarily to landscaping that we wanted to talk about, which we'll get into, but we thank him for his comments and will comply with those comments as a condition of approval, other than the few clarifications or exceptions that we'll identify momentarily. So unless anyone has any questions for me, I'm going to ask Mr. Cleary to step forward. Mr. Cleary, were you present last month at the hearing?
Yes.
And you're the project civil engineer?
Yes.
And I believe you was qualified at that time, Mr. Chairman. Did you prepare the site plan that was submitted with this application and Exhibit 2, which is on the board in front of you?
Yes.
Okay, were you present during my introductory comments?
Yes.
Were they accurate to the best of your knowledge?
Yes.
Okay, let's get into the plan. So Exhibit 8.2, is that an aerial showing some of the improvements that we're making?
Yeah, mainly just the landscaping improvements, because the remainder of the improvements really can't be shown on an aerial, they're fairly minor, which include updates to the ADA spaces. We currently don't need ADA standards for ramps and slopes, so we're updating the ADA spaces. The entire parking lot will be milled and overlaid, as it's not in the best condition. And as shown on this plan, we're proposing fairly significant landscaping throughout the perimeter of the property. The interior of the property has some landscaping, the front of the property also has some along Clemens Bridge Road, but we really wanted to beef up the landscaping adjacent to the residential properties.
Okay, well, I was going to ask you to summarize for the board all the changes that we're proposing at the site. Did you cover all of them, or are there any others?
The only other major change is we're proposing new lighting throughout the site. Currently, there's building-downed lights on the building, we'll be upgrading those to LED lights, and then we're also adding two lights to the rear parking lot portion to ensure that the entire property is lit.
Okay, well, let's talk about the landscaping, starting on the right-hand side, which is the south side. Can you briefly describe the landscaping that you're proposing to add there?
Yes, so currently, there's a small buffer strip due to the existing access from Black Horse Pike, which is in the easement off-site. So within that area, we're proposing relatively small but tall evergreen trees, and then once the, the grass area opens up a little bit, we're proposing green giant arborvitae, which can get to be 50 feet tall, 12 feet wide, along the remainder of the southern property lot.
Okay, and is that intended to provide a landscape buffer to the properties to the south?
Yes.
What about perpendicular to that on the east side?
So on the east side, we're proposing all deciduous street trees, they're columnar shaped, they're more for beautification, they're, they won't be an evergreen buffer, however, Mr. Bach did request that we supplement that with some evergreens, so we'll work with Mr. Bach to coordinate the landscaping design along St. Clair Road.
Okay, moving right to left, going towards Clemens Bridge, I see some landscaping proposed at the top of that east driveway.
So, in this area, it's the same evergreen trees as along the southern portion of the property with the narrow landscaped area, however, these will be spread out a little bit more because we're not proposing an actual buffer in there, because they're two commercial properties, it's more for ornamental purposes. Then along the front of the building, we currently propose some ornamental grasses and the same trees that we have along St. Clair Road. We'll be supplementing the ornamental grasses with some evergreen shrubs as well, to make sure there's a year-round visual appeal. We are requesting, there are three trees, mature trees along Clemens Bridge Road, we're requesting to have those removed, because we are proposing a facade sign along Clemens Bridge Road, and there's currently a pylon sign along Clemens Bridge Road that we're looking to demolish and build a new one. The, both of these signs, the pylon sign much worse than the facade sign, but they both would be basically covered by these streets if they were to remain. So, in order to compensate for those trees being lost, the plan for the building facade is to kind of have a living wall, so as we testified last month.
What is that plan?
So this is a conceptual rendering of the building elevations. So as you testified last month, there would be these landscape areas, not, it wouldn't be a green roof, but there would be a portion of the roof that would be landscaped, and along the front of it, the plan is to have vines that hang over the building to give it a bit of a, a green facade, while also making sure that the sign is perfectly visible. So that, that's the reasoning for wanting to remove those three trees.
And that was one of the comments in Mr. Bach's letter, specifically Comment 14 on Page 8, recommending against the removal of those trees, correct?
Correct.
So we're asking the board to allow us to remove those trees because of the other landscaping that we're adding, the trees that we're adding, and because of the building improvements, correct?
Correct.
Now, those trees are not in the right of way, are they?
They are not.
Okay. And we'll work with Mr. Bach's office relating to his comments as to trees along the other boundary lines, correct?
Correct.
Now, there was a comment in Mr. Bach's letter relating to a lighting fixture, it's Comment 21 on Page 8, in which he recommends that proposed light fixture C1 be relocated to the eastward side of the parking lot, and all pole-mounted light fixtures shall be provided with backlight shields. What's our response on that?
We, we have no concerns with the backlight shields. The only concern we have is the light fixture in question is in this landscape island, and it points towards this grass area. If we were to relocate it to the opposite side of the driveway, that would, wouldn't hinder the applicant to be able to potentially develop this area with another building? We don't know if that will ever happen, but it would just be an added expense to move that light back across the driveway to where I'm currently proposing it.
And then lastly, Mr. Bach's letter, they recommend that proposed parking lot striking be noted as low-life epoxy paint. What's our response on that?
Based upon the applicant, their information from the applicant, it's, he says it's very difficult to get strikers to come out for small parking lots to provide that type of epoxy paint. It's a private site. He uses latex paint for all his sites. If the latex paint were out, it's on the applicant to have to restrict the parking lot.
And that's Comment 13 on Page 8, and we're asking for the board's consideration on that.
Yes, in addition, the requirement for epoxy paint is not an ordinance requirement.
Now, is it correct that this property is in the commercial zone with a cannabis establishment's overlay?
Yes.
Is it correct that this proposed site plan meets all zoning ordinance? Oh, wait, let me rephrase that. Is it correct that this plan does not require any new variances for any waivers or exceptions to site plan standards?
Yes, that's correct.
And the variances that are noted in Mr. Bach's letter are all existing nonconformities that we're not making worse, correct?
Yes.
Is there any aspect of the ordinance from a design standpoint that we do not comply with that you're aware of?
No.
Okay. Did I correctly identify the proposed changes to access throughout the site?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, that's all the questions I have for Mr. Cleary at this point.
If I can just ask you a question, short clarification. So Mr. Cleary, on the landscaping, which is adjacent to the residential, adjacent to the pole on your exhibit?
Yes.
You agreed to do the double row of the evergreens, the plan thing to be coordinated with the offices?
Yes.
In regards to the lighting, is my understanding, is my understanding correct, that though they're going to be LED, they will be all downward throw?
Yes.
And shielded lights? My main concern with the lighting comment is to make sure there's no overflow to the residential properties, not only in foot candles, but in also in terms of visible glare. And if you don't have a completely shielded box light, you can see the light bulb, even though it's not actually illuminating your property. That's my main concern, so.
And, and the landscaping that we're providing along St. Clair will help to minimize any potential for glare, but they, they are downward throw, they're LED lights, so there shouldn't be any glare to the.
So, so solicitors want to make sure we note that for the record, that it's going to be downward throw and shielded to the satisfaction of the board engineer. That's, that's the main concern with the residents, that, yes, it's okay to see the light glowing, but not see the bulb and not have it chugging in your eyes. The other clarification was in regards to the paint. The plans indicate, and nothing offensive to the applicant, but the, the plans indicate that the paint is to be selected by the ER. I would have no objection if the applicant's engineer provided specification on acceptable paint through industry standards, as certified by his hand, as professional engineer, signed and sealed. I would be acceptable to that. My recommendation always is the epoxy paint, because it lasts much longer than two years. However, we do not have a specific standard of your ordinance. As long as we have a paint that is specifically for the purpose of its intention, I think we, we can, we can not object to the opt-in request. And in regards to the trees along Clemens Bridge Road, they are not the borough's street trees. I, I tried to ask the applicant to trim them instead of remove, but they are on their property, and they have the right to remove them. We do not have a true effect ordinance within, within the borough's ordinances, and so the rationale for the proper full use of their property, we cannot object to. I am going to ask for a better testimony on some of the items, and I'm going to try to see if Mr. Cleary can take care of this. If not, it might be Mr. Mosley from Shropshire. There is a existing pylon sign in an easement area adjacent to the Black Horse Pike.
Yes, so there are currently two signs right next to each other. One is for Lucas Laundry, which is this building on the west side, southwest side of the property, and there is a second pylon sign for this property. As of right now, the plan is just to reface that sign, to keep it exactly as is, but reface it.
So, that is, that's an existing condition, so it's not a new variant, so it doesn't need the threshold of a user in it for a off-site sign, because it rides with the property. The, we were just asked that the easement information be properly annotated to your site plan set for the survey?
Yes.
So it rides with the borough's files?
Good idea. The, the minor site plan will be updated from the original SAPIA survey to the VARGO survey that we submitted.
So we have our thing on there. The properties, all three properties, three lots, I believe?
Yes.
All three are working in conjunction with each other for one complete use. Our recommendation is to have the lots consolidated into one lot, because it's in essence acting as one lot. Do you have any objections?
Normally, there would be no objection. Our thought here, we discussed this today, was that it wouldn't be necessary, because none of those lots are undersized. The lot size requirement for this zone is 6,000 square feet. Am I correct, Mr. Cleary, that they all meet that requirement?
Yes, the smallest lot, 12.04, I believe, is around 6,500 square feet, about 50 by 130.
So that's our thought, that was our thought process.
Well, and then in the alternative, which may change your thought process, then we're going to have to have every bit of easement required on these lots. If they're not consolidated, then I need cross easements, consolidation, I'm sorry, cross easements, covenants, restrictions, everything that would have to be acceptable to the board, solicitor myself, and file. That may be an exercise.
I, I would agree with your condition, I mean, do either one.
There we go. Thank you. In the signage table, it indicates, and I think this is just probably the type of Page 4, my comment number form 8.7, there's a third note reference, but it didn't refer to anything.
I think that just got cut off in the table. I, I think it, it's an explanation on how the facade, the permitted facade sign area is calculated.
Correct, no sign variances are being proposed as part of the application, which is that's the main reason for that clarification. In the traffic analysis, and maybe you can answer this, Mr. Mosley, indicated that this would be only 4960 square feet for cannabis, and the rest would be for retail. What is the, the actual size of the cannabis facility and is, which I understand is 8,980, is that correct?
Yes, so the, the entire building is right around 9,000 square feet. So, 830? So that's?
That'll be 8.5.
8.5.
I've marked for exhibitory, that would be 8.5. Please identify.
So this is a preliminary floor plan for the, the building. Currently, it's not finalized, but it's a balance, 55 to 60% retail sales floor area, the rest is strictly for storage and bathrooms and stuff like that, so.
All for the cannabis retail use?
Yes.
Okay, so that, that's where we were, Mike?
Right, so if I understand the comment correctly, we will submit this floor plan as a condition of approval with the exact square footage for the cannabis retail portion noted on the plan. And my understanding, from speaking to Mr. Cleary and Mr. Mosley, is that it's approximately 60% retail, the rest is just storage and back office?
For the cannabis?
Approximately 60% for the cannabis retail, and the balance being for storage and back office, relating to the cannabis.
Okay, I just want to make sure that this is, what we're asking for approval for the site plan this evening, which is also similar to what you previously received for your conditional use approval, was the entirety of the building was for the Class V cannabis retail establishment.
That's correct.
So there is no secondary suite, secondary use that could be leased out separate from the cannabis retail establishment?
No.
And, and the one and only cannabis retail establishment that's on the site.
No meaning, you're correct.
Okay, I just, I just want to make sure that it's not intended to have a separate suite or subdivision.
That, that is not what we're asking you to approve, and that's not intended.
With that, I do not know whether we need a revision to the, the traffic analysis or not, so I look at that a little bit more closely. If it's required, will you do?
Yeah, we'll, we'll update the traffic report if you require.
If required.
I think what you're going to find is the numbers he assumed are almost exactly right, but not exactly.
And maybe just the wording of it. I think even on the record here, that we're clear that whole building cannabis retail establishment with subset area for retail actual operations and the rest of it is back office and storage for the same use.
The board, any more questions from Mr. Cleary?
I just have a couple regarding St. Clair Road is number one. So people coming off of Royal Terrace into St. Clair?
Not sure what Royal Terrace is.
The Royal Terrace, Plaza Place?
Plaza Place.
Plaza Place, okay. So Plaza Place to St. Clair?
Right.
So once they get to the top, right past, I'm trying to, there's not like markers there, but those bushes that you're going to put in, once they go through that road there, that part, they can't exit there. Is that correct?
No, that's not right. So go to A2, please. So we're not proposing any obstruction to the current flow of traffic. So anyone going north on St. Clair Road.
Yeah.
St. Clair Road right away stops here.
Right.
But they can continue and go out. But what we are changing is no one coming into our site and therefore being able to go down.
No one coming into your site with Clemmers Bridge.
Right.
And that driveway back and then if you're all going out.
Right, but my thought is why can't we stop them from going back out St. Clair once they get in?
As we said, you're putting that no right turn sign.
So the driveway, and Mr. Cleary, right by the road, shrubbery there.
Right.
Do the adjacent, I'm going to call it the Hair Hut right on Clemmers Bridge Road, that driveway. Right there, that is not suitable for two-way traffic. They're going to make that a one-way.
Not that one.
Okay.
So along here.
Right there.
Okay.
We will put a sign in saying no right turn. So we cannot make a right.
Okay, that's good. That's number one. And then coming, if you follow it all the way up to Clemmers Bridge, they can either make a left or a right, or is that just incoming?
So this will only be exit, but you can make a left or a right.
You can.
So this will be the secondary egress from.
Gotcha. Put the one down from it closer to the pike.
That'll be right turn only leaving.
And you can come in there as well.
You can make a left or a right in.
My other thought was, like, don't buy that and deal in that area a lot. What about the thought of the easement off the pike going the other way?
So the concern with that is.
And you can only make a right-hand turn onto the pike.
Yeah, that's going to significantly complicate our DOT approvals. And that's not the way it's operated, and I think that was discussed in conditional use as well. We need people to get into the site from the Black Horse Pike side as well. And by the way, everything we discussed today on access is subject to the county's approval because Clemmers Bridge is a county road, but we're going to propose to them what we're showing on this plan.
I believe with the modifications that we put, a lot of effort involved in this, and I actually had many discussions with the applicant's engineer as well as the applicant with this. I believe this is the best and the safest circulation plan for this rather complicated site that is existing in the middle of the borough. I would not recommend changing the direction of the Black Horse Pike entrance. I believe that is going to allow people through Black Horse Pike.
So not to interrupt you, but if I'm coming south on the Black Horse Pike from St. Belmar, I cross Clemmers Bridge, can I make a left into that? Oh, you can, okay.
And you can make it in the other direction.
And you don't think that's going to cross?
I believe that is, I believe that is how it's been operated. It's been permitted by NJPOD for CBS Pharmacy. So I know it's been analyzed by the NJO already. I would defer and I would allow the existing operation that drives the remain. That's my recommendation.
Gotcha. Yes.
It is entrance only. That is a one-way into the site. There is no exit from the site. The applicant has provided on the parking area, because there's do not enter signs, Mr. Cleary, to show.
Yes, so we'll be proposing two new do not enter signs to make sure no one makes a right and leaves through Black Horse Pike. And this last parking space will be cross striping and adding a no parking sign. So anyone who does happen to drive to the end there has a way to turn a right.
And a follow-up, because this is one of the comments now. Is there any objection if the applicant allows Title 39 on the property?
No objection at all.
All right, and Mr. Cleary, did you just tell the board what Title 39 is?
So, well, the police department does not have the authority to write traffic someone's is on private property. This is especially appropriate here because of the unique circumstance involving the intersection of the road. So if somebody takes a right out of our parking lot, goes down St. Clair Road, contrary to the do not, no right turn sign, police officers can write a ticket for that. The Borough Council have to adopt a permitting, committing that, a resolution, and we accept that as a condition. So that gives the residents and anyone the right to call the police and say, hey, these people are not following some condition in a resolution somewhere, and you can write a ticket. We have no objection.
So they do not enter signs, the police can write them an actual ticket and take them before if they ignore the no right turn or the no left turn. It just gives us an extra tool to enforce the circulation that we're all assessing.
That has to be adopted by council, right?
Yes, but the applicant will be part of this resolution, and for them to operate, that's going to have to be perfected by council. We cannot require council to do that, but they indicate that they will not object.
Right, you can require us to ask, and we agree to that condition, and we will do so. So, Mr. Chairman, that really concludes our plan presentation. If anyone has any questions for Mr. Cleary, myself, or any other team, we'll answer them. But as it relates to site plan, again, the purpose of this is to look at what this site looks like today, the limited changes that are proposed to this longstanding building, and how it complies with the ordinance. There really isn't much more to it, but we're here to answer any questions.
I have one more question.
Sure.
Again, back to lighting. Hours of operation, just so if we can put that on the record and then talk about after-hours lighting or security lighting. Hours of operations will match the borough's ordinance?
They will comply with the borough ordinance, and there will be safety lighting on. I don't recall how long after we close they're going to be turned off.
So it was our discussion that the all lights would stay on until an hour after close, which the hours are nine to nine, seven days a week? Okay, seven days a week. I believe we provided that testimony at the conditional use hearing. The plan would be to keep the building lights, or some of the building lights, on throughout the night, but have these whole mounted lights turned off.
So the lighting in the parking lot adjacent to the residential will be off? Will be off an hour after close.
Yes.
Which the maximum time is 10:00 P.M.
Yes.
Well, closed by maximum time is 9:00 P.M., but your intention, one hour after close?
Yes.
So no later than 10:00 P.M. You don't have to state those whole mounted parking lights being on?
No, the point for an hour after is allow all employees to be able to safely leave the premises.
And one last question. All building mounted lights, you agree will also be downward row?
Yes.
And shielded?
Yes.
And that really, I refer everyone to our letter of October 19th. The applicant is agreed with all other conditions that are on their letters except as specifically discussed this evening.
Steve, the applicant doesn't need any variances for the facade, two facade signs?
Based on our analysis, they have not requested any variances. And because they have two visible facades.
They're permitted then to have to.
Do you have any more questions from the board? Okay, at this time, I would open this up to the public. Please help state your name and address. We will entertain questions about the site plan only.
Hello, Freddie Fishon, I'm the employee for Lindsay Avenue. I do have a question. I'm not for this at all, for any of this in town. But on the one, we have St. Clair Road, and I know you said you can't make a right out of there. They can only make a left. Won't that bring more traffic to Lindsay Avenue than next street up? Because I opened my door, and that's what I'm going to be seeing on my front door. So I'm looking, everyone up here has to look at that. But that's going to bring more traffic for people who have to move south because they can't make a left. They can only make a right.
They can only make a right. I was about to say. I'm sorry, I'm going to answer some of it if I can. The applicant does fight on the drive aisle that's adjacent to the Hair Hut.
Right.
You can make a left or a right. That's not restricted.
Oh, for right here?
Yeah. The left, the left is the one closest, the next, down on Clemmers Bridge.
Okay.
Right by the urgent care drive.
Okay.
That one is, that one is no left.
Right, that's all it is?
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other questions to speak?
Sure. My name is Gary Beebe of the 39 Plaza Place. Some places say that if you've got the signage, it's going to turn, you know, not allowed to turn right on St. Clair Road. I'm still concerned about traffic, like she said, coming in off of Plaza Place on the St. Clair Road. And it's a unique building, so the areas you can go in and out of are pretty difficult. I'm also concerned about the timing of operations, nine to nine, seven days a week. I'd like to sit in my backyard on Sunday without having people coming in and out of there. I understand, I understand that. The other thing I'm concerned about is the, you have the grass area and what potential uses that is. I understand that Mr. Holcomb gave a interview with Bridge West Consulting, and in that interview, they stated that they're going to have some events on that site. So I was interested in what type of events they would be housing on that property.
Well, right now, there's no application before this board, nor application pending before the borough for any outdoor events or any outdoor operations of the cannabis facility. So, and our ordinance, and I'm going to have to defer to the borough, mayor and council, and the borough's solicitor, I don't believe anything related to outdoor events related to cannabis can be permitted based on our cannabis overlay ordinance. That's my understanding.
Great. Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mark. Your address, though?
28 St. Anne. They said that no outdoor events can be made in this site. What is the site's plan for the crowd that will form over the business?
I can just indicate that of the application materials as part of the cannabis overlay ordinance that permits this use within certain areas of the county. This is one of the sites that is a conditional, it's actually now a conditionally approved site. A security plan acceptable and approved by the Borough Rondome Police Department is required to be submitted by the applicant as part of the conditional use approval. They did do that. They did include in that provisions for security. And that has been approved conditionally by the Borough Rondome Police Department and Chief of Police Nichols. So they do have provisions for traffic control and pedestrian control in that plan. And they will be obligated under the conditional use approval to follow that security plan.
That doesn't interest them. I give a short fact we, I probably have to give a minute of insight every morning.
They are not allowed to have, based on, based on what was submitted and the chief's approval, they are not to be permitted to have a nuisance situation to occur. The Borough Police Department. I can't say how it would be enforced because that's outside of my purview. That's the police department's job. But that's why we specifically had in the ordinance that was adopted by mayor and council that the security plan was under the complete review jurisdiction of the police department.
What was that question?
How many here visited Curalee in Belmar on Friday Saturday?
I raised my hand because I'm the borough engineer in Belmar, so I understand that correct.
So you understand how the climate they get, and how the crowds they get.
Absolutely.
And that this is all, so when that crowds, when that dispensary sells out, where are those crowds going to come to our track? They're going to allow a hackaway.
That's true. That's a great comment. I have a good response.
Doesn't seem like there's a borough plan or place to handle the amount of crowds, people becoming daily in these sites. It's not very good records, people on St. Corr Avenue, people on Hudson Avenue, that already have traffic issues, have to deal with. It doesn't really sound, I saw the traffic study and it compared that to the active dispensary like Curalee. To compare the body, to compare it to that very numbers and that's a lot big loss. We all know there's a traffic issue on Clemmers Bridge, Black Horse Pike, every day. And so nothing against businesses here, but this is something that's taken into consideration, trust that. There's nothing in that traffic study that they can do that's going to improve that situation. That's all right now. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Chuck Oliver. I'm 25 Plaza Place. My act here is on St. Clair. The nine o'clock is unacceptable. I mean, we won't be able to sit out at night during summer. Security, they close at nine o'clock. You taking care of that? You're going to have people coming out at nine o'clock, sitting in that parking lot, smoking. You know it, I know it. And the cops can't do anything because it's private property?
No. Can you answer that for me?
Yes.
So very specifically, these were the concerns when the mayor and council considered the ordinance. That's why the security plan is in place. They have to make sure that none of those things that you just said occur. And then also with the Title 39, if they're breaking, if they're breaking the law, cops can come in and perform any police functions they need to. Private property, notwithstanding.
From their back door, 25 yards away is a house for four kids. They're going to be up and down St. Clair, or St. Clair, coming off the pike, coming off Washington Avenue, coming down that street to go into the parking lot. Correct?
There's nothing prohibiting anybody going into St. Clair and going into the site. That is correct.
So we just really get.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. There's a do not enter at the main T-drive. And Mr. Cleary, can you show the gentleman?
I know, I live on St. Clair and Plaza.
Where's the do not enter?
On the left-hand side.
Right, right.
So we will have do not enters on Clemmers Bridge Road.
And you have do not enters there as well.
A right-hand turn here, and yes, we can provide do not enter signs along here as well.
I've been there 35 years and that sign's been there and hasn't been obeyed.
I'm just wanting to clarify to the board, my understanding, Mr. Cleary, the do not enter is from the St. Clair right away, no, St. Clair right away going into your site. That's my understanding of it.
No, the do not enter sign is right there on Plaza St. Clair.
It would be to keep us from.
That's the no, that's the no right turn.
Well, we could also place do not enter signs facing Clemmers Bridge Road.
I have a specific comment, maybe this is a point of clarification. The do not enter, that was intended.
The do not enter sign right here has not been obeyed since the day I moved in there.
I'm not aware of the one on the municipal roadway. My understanding that is a two-way drive there. But the drive in, Mr. Deldeka?
Yeah.
Just so I'm making sure we're all talking about, including the public, the same thing. And sir, don't, just don't go away. I just need a clarification. The T-drive that goes into St. Clair right wing, I know you have it signed when you exit, no right-hand turn. My understanding, at least what I try to relate here, is that we wanted a do not enter sign where it is, where it's going into your site. So people coming, we do not want to encourage people coming down and cutting through St. Clair to get into this facility.
So people going north from St. Clair can't turn left into the cannabis?
Incorrect, because we're trying to avoid having residential cut-through. We don't want to stop the residents from St. Clair from, if the applicant allows it, to continue, from getting out the Clemmers Bridge. But we do not want the people. But we do not want the people that are going to be visiting the cannabis dispensary to leave out to the St. Clair by a right-hand turn, we want to prohibit that. But we also want to prohibit people from trying to come down St. Clair and going to the back of the parking lot.
Right.
So that's?
I mean, you've got, you've got six kids that live in that area.
That, that was my understanding, and I just need some clarification from the applicants, that that is your understanding as well.
Yeah, we don't have any objection to that.
That's what the intention was, is to allow the two-way traffic to remain停留 on St. Clair. But to prohibit people leaving the facility from going down St. Clair. And if people do come up St. Clair and, and try to enter into the back parking lot with the do not enter signs, then the police department takes it on that.
And with the lighting, if I want to sit out at night in the summertime, I may need sunglasses at nine o'clock at night. I mean, the spotlight you got at the Hair Hut comes right through my kitchen, right into my living room. You got all the bright lights in the laundromat. You got a big spotlight on another pole right there. Their lights, I may need sunglasses.
All you do is speak about this application, the applicant's brief for oral testimony, that the lights would be shielded down one row and compliant with our ordinance.
And who's taking care of security when that place closes it?
I'm going to defer to the applicant on that one.
Nine o'clock at night, you close, that's end of story, correct? No more security, no nothing?
Yeah, what about that?
We're on our own?
The board wants to provide the answer, we could use some, we were testing it quite a last month.
I was here this morning.
I understand.
But nine o'clock at night, that place closes.
If your question is, Mr. Gerber, we're going to have overnight round-the-clock security, the answer to that is no, we're not. We're going to have, the place is going to be secure, there are state regulations as to how this product has to be stored. There are requirements in the ordinance, by the way, that say there's going to be no on-site consumption of cannabis, no loitering disturbance, all of which are violated, some of this will be issued. That all falls under enforcement. So as far as people smoking after hours, that's against the law, they'll be cited. Because you'll call the police and they'll cite them, and if you don't, you should complain to the police.
Well, by the time they get there, they're on the road. Philly Sports Bar went in there, I had to go outside the next morning and pick up all the beer cans. They weren't supposed to leave the bar with them. This is what's going to happen. I want, I'd like to see a couple speed bumps put in on St. Clair and St. Plaza Place. I mean, you got stop signs. The only people who stopped there are my neighbors.
The only thing before the, the land use board, the planning board this evening, is the site plan for this site, which is under the control of the owner. Any concerns, and they very well could be valid regarding any improvements that may be warranted or asked for for St. Clair, you would have to make your case at the Borough Council meeting.
I'm going to be there for that one.
Yeah, it's off-site, unfortunately, this land use board cannot, and Mr. Solicitor, please correct me if I'm wrong, this land use board cannot act unfavorably on an application due to surrounding traffic. That is not the ability of this, this board. We can control the review of the site circulation and how it interacts with the adjacent roadways, but an application could not be deemed, could not be acted on unfavorably because it's on a busy road, like I'm in Detroit, or the Black River Plate.
My other question is, why?
Exactly, Mr. Solicitor. I just want to make sure I got my solicitor.
Why do they have to be open nine to, eight to nine at night, seven days a week?
Our ordinance, the ordinance sir provides that, allows that. If you look at our, that's what was voted on, that's what the Borough adopted. It says hours of operations, seven days a week, nine to nine.
Oh, and we had no say in this. We can't do nothing about it.
That's under the purview and jurisdiction of Mayor and Council. That ordinance was publicly advertised, and this was some months ago. They did have a public hearing on that ordinance. Any concerns?
You never got notified.
It's, they differ notices in the newspaper and posted on the website at the Borough. It's not a requirement, they have a 200-foot list for any ordinances within the Borough that are adopted by government body. Any concerns with these, and I'm sure government bodies will love them saying this, but any of those concerns are not here at the land use board, it's outside of the board's control. If there's your concerns regarding hours of operations that are allowed for within the Borough code by ordinance, that's something to take up with Mayor and Council.
Now, I don't know if this is sustained, but why does Runnymede need three stores selling pie?
We have a rulebook that this board has to follow. So we're following the rules that are provided to us as a, as a joint land use board, planning board, sorry. So we're following the rules. We have a rulebook which are our ordinances. The applicant is here for a site plan application. They already have a conditional use, the use is permitted.
But three stores selling pie?
All welcoming to each other.
Yeah. That will even hike, that's why I have a case.
Greg said I'm on the school. There may be three applications, we've already addressed one, we're addressing one.
I was here this one for this.
There are two, Runnymede only has two retail dispensaries.
Well, you got the old Town Hall Police Station, and now you got the Freedom Home right there at the entrance.
There's no app.
That was the pay mark right there.
Sir, I'm going to have to ask Mr. Chairman. Sir, we only agree to deliberate as to the application for us this evening. This application stands on its own, and it's a zone application. But we have to follow the Mr. Land use law. We are talking about this application and this application only as part of this public session. All right, there is a good welfare session at the end of the planning board meeting where you talk about any and all other matters. But right now, we're in the open public portion for an application that's pending for us, which is for the site plan.
You're all lucky, I promise my wife I'm good.
And you were.
Thank you very much.
I actually hear more regards to the questions on safety, good and welfare portion. One thought came to mind, people making a left-hand turn, we're talking about circulation on St. Clements Bridge Road, making a left-hand turn.
That's correct, out of, coming out of the establishment, making a left on Clements Bridge, that's.
I'm sure you've all driven Clements Bridge Road, the Black River Plate, and how it is almost enemy in its land out there, making lefts, people swerving to right, on the accidents, I think, I've lost count, the amount of accidents I've almost gotten into because someone chose to not use their blinker or pressing on the right to avoid them. It is somewhat confusing, especially without a turning lane.
No turning.
Pretty confusing area, just in general. In addition to, I mean, and when I was also using that corner, I feel awful for any delivery person. That's fine. And if you just get into the mix, I am concerned that that would be only adding to already, in my opinion, unstable intersection, that has a high potential for accidents, means see all of them.
Which drive specifically? The one closest to the Black River Plate or the one-way drive entering the subject property and, and you say the Harrowman Park?
Okay, no, so not that, I'm sorry. So coming, so it comes from either one, either one of those turning left. I don't, I'm not sure whether that is in conjunction with the police, with the bike storage area.
So the lower one adjacent to the urgent care, Mr. Clary? Show that one, Mr. Clary, that is a no left turn designated?
So the left turn would be here, yeah.
Yes.
All right, so I mean, it's pretty regular that it's easy to turn onto Central because of traffic so right down. So that's, that's a daily turn, turning out of a high traffic. Hey, it just seems a bit of a concern, it's already a nervous intersection without any arrows, et cetera, et cetera. I believe that needs to be considered for the health and well-being of a large portion of traffic that already comes through both of those roads. Wondering if there's any thoughts or comments on, on that note?
I'm going to, I'm going to pull some information out from the applicant, if I could. If there, maybe Mr. Clary can show this also. How would people without that left turn, coming out of the one-way drive, I don't believe there's another way to go left and to exit the site. So we would, we would then have to limit the, the do not enter, and then people would actually have to go down? They would have to go down St. Clair.
Which is exactly her right, because in other words, if I'm driving, okay, I don't partake in this activity, they don't judge anyone who does. If I was coming out of that establishment, I'd make a right, because it's taking my life. I'm at that point to make a left, because that's, maybe it's just me, maybe I'm just an unlucky driver, but yeah.
So right now, there is no restrictions on rights in and rights out of any of those driveways. It's, it's what it is.
Wisdom and a matter of the gallant.
I, I can say as an engineer, and I represent it for, I have no objection, I believe this is the best that can be done with this existing site. And if, if you restrict the left turn out of the Hair Hut one-way drive, then you must allow the right turn onto St. Clair. And I'm going to, I'm going to just say to the board, I believe that is the best that can be done with existing, but I completely understand. There's no, there's no perfect solution here. This is not a brand-new site. This configuration, unfortunately, has been within the borough since, I believe, the eighties, when this was originally approved. Am I correct on that? Somewhere in the eighties when it was originally, the original CBS Barnard Street.
Fifty-four years she's down the street.
The CBS, CBS in 69, okay.
No, no, it was AMP back then, you know, it's.
Yeah, but I believe the circulation would be, they just, at least I can track on that.
Do you have a question? Your request to leave, do an enter sign, I mean, correctly, for a moment, it's been a while since I've been in a vehicle training classes. That does not restrict foot traffic, correct?
Right.
I must say.
Thank you. Anyone else in the public, we should speak on this matter? Motion to close the public porch park, coming back up here. Excuse me?
I would like to ask that the council is put on definite hold any of the curbs which are vulnerable until this town, when town gather, and go to discuss the ordinance number 20113 approved on October 5th, 2021.
We're not allowed to do that, sir.
I know that the cannabis council can't do that.
We're not, we're not a council, this is a board.
I'm asking the board to put this, all these on the, on the definite hold until the town can gather, ex, gather.
We can't do that, sir.
Well, this is.
Because the applicant, the applicant with number one had to consent or request. You can ask them if they were consent or request. If not, we have to hear this, this is an application for the board. Sean, you can't do that. So they don't have to?
They don't have to do that. Applicants, would you mind if just, was put on for, I'm hoping to the town gather, to discuss it the next town meeting?
Yes, you're fine.
You would understand, the applicant doesn't have to. Not out of meaning, anything saying he doesn't, he doesn't agree, he doesn't have to. He's followed the law, folks. He's followed what our ordinance says. We're directed by the ordinance, the planning board is directed by the law, the statutes of the state, the ordinances of the community, of what we have to do. We can only deviate if there is a request for something that's not provided in that ordinance.
This additional ordinance is not passed by the community, it's passed by five council members?
Who were voted by the community, sir.
Community was not aware of this.
Sir, it was, they don't have to give you individual personal notes, but I'm sure this is all the reasons about.
By law, by law requires that a thousand feet between anybody that's drinking marijuana, this site alone, this site that proposed the law on, rest of it, also being a hundred feet.
So we're in confluence with the state's laws when they adopted by referendum in our state that marijuana, marijuana sales could be prohibited for resident, for, for use.
Yeah, but not three in a one tower school, that's.
And, and sir, you can say your opinion, but if, if it's going to be anything that's not specific to this application, I mean, it should hold for the public, you can make your comments, certain things, it's outside of our purview, we have no response. So I believe you heard that we cannot stop the proceedings, because that's not within our jurisdiction to do so. We cannot change the ordinance that allows for the recreational dispensaries to occur within the Borough Runnymede, nor can we change the rules of that ordinance that are now part of our land use code that we're tasked to, tasked to, but I mean, this is. So.
Forget about it.
It's the law.
Mr. Chairman, excuse me.
Our case being in my heart, it doesn't matter, they all know.
I just would like to place an objection on the record. Steph Polk at here, Mr. Sims, all people are yelling in the back, everyone with a weight third turn, everyone with a speed one at a time. Everyone with their selves, thank you.
Let this, if someone has time, please reconsider that when the town discusses first the board.
Okay, I'm going to be respectful. So, Mr. Land use law has already explained that we filed an application to this board. And, and filing an application to this board, we sought site plan approval. That means we have to submit plans to show whether this proposed use meets the design standards relating to parking lots, lighting, landscaping, drainage, signage, and similar things that are true for CVS, the Hair Hut, or any other use, any other commercial use in this town than any town. So there's a set of rules that we have to follow, and we follow them. We sought no approval of any deviation from any of those rules other than some of the submission requirements, which aren't really applicable here to this specific application for, for a use that's been in place, excuse me, a building has been in place for over 50 years apparently. So under a land use law, this board, who I know you're appearing before tonight, has limited authority. Their role tonight is, do we meet the site plan and zoning ordinance or don't wait? And is this plan compliant with the town's rules? And if you were standing in my shoes, and any property owners are standing in my shoes, they want to make sure that if they follow the rules, they got their approval. And that's, those are the shoes that I stand in tonight. The law protects property owners when, from boards delaying on acting on an application. There are certain time limits within which a board has to act on an application. This board doesn't have a choice but to act on this application within those time limits. Sometimes applicants are asked to consent to the extension of those times for action, and often applicants will. But when that happens, it's usually because there's something about the plan itself that warrants further review, or there are additional details that are required. That's not the case tonight. And as a result, with respect, the applicant asks the board to act and does not consent to the extension of any time for action. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Deldeka.
Hi, sorry, one question. Could I ask for clarification as to why the entrance coming off the Black River Plate could not be turned into two ways? What, I mean, what restricts that from taking place?
I'm going to let the applicant's engineer answer that.
Mr. Clary? Mr. Clary?
Uh, yes. So, currently, it's located in an easement off-site, um, that is, uh, basically the exact same width as the driveway. So, we have no ability to widen the driveway without getting an additional easement. The properties are developed on both sides. It, it's just not feasible.
Okay, so it's a fact that you don't own the property on either side, correct?
I guess. We, we also technically don't own the property that the driveway is coming through. There's an easement that allows us to utilize that. Okay, okay. Thank you.
Do I have a motion to close the public portion? I make a motion to close.
Second.
A motion made by, uh, by now, what's second by Ms. Gotion to close the public portion? All in favor?
Okay. Chairman, board members, this is an application of ten East Clemens Bridge Road LLC for a site plan approval for premises located at ten East Clemens Bridge Road, um, lot one twelve, lots twelve, twelve point zero one, and twelve point zero three. As the board is aware, this applicant has appeared at a previous meeting and was given conditional use, uh, approval to, uh, establish and run a recreational cannabis store at this location this evening. Was application to make sure that the applicant's plan can conform to all of the requirements of our zoning ordinance. The, you've all reviewed Mr. Bach's review letter, and in addition to certain variances that are being requested, you should note that those variances are for pre-existing conditions, um, set forth in his law. Um, there are also certain waiver, waivers recommended regarding the, uh, the site plan completeness, which I believe the waiver that the applicant has indicated during his testimony, there are modifications to the plan or additions, additions to the plan to perfect what was stated upon tonight, agreed upon tonight that they will... With any site plan, you can also impose conditions. At which this board has indicated that they're intent to do. One condition is that all outside lighting is to be shielded and downward faced, which would be any of lighting that there is now, or any additional lighting that may be, may be constructed pursuant to the plan. There's also a condition that the applicant's engineer will, um, convince or will satisfy our engineer that the proposed paint will be used for the striping in the parking lot, um, uh, will be acceptable. There's also a condition that the, uh, applicant will either consolidate all, all the lots in question, or they will prepare and file cross easements for all the individual lots which are subject to this, this application. Um, you, and the applicant has agreed, and there's been extensive, um, testimony and the responses to the public regarding the no left-hand turn signs, the do not enter signs, and other signs which Mr. Bach feels, in his professional opinion, are, are, are best for this property and this site plan, and the, and applicant has demonstrated and has testified that they will comply with those plans and recommendations. Um, the applicant has also stated that if required by our engineer, the applicant will upgrade the traffic report study if that is deemed to be necessary. Uh, the applicant has also testified again that this entire building will be used for retail, sales purposes and storage, and for no other business. In other words, it can't be subdivided and a, and another ancillary business be, be set in, in this particular building. The applicant has also agreed that they, as a condition, and under Title thirty-nine of the New Jersey statutes articulated, that the, there will be a system or a resolution that will be in place where the police can come onto this property, uh, whether either, uh, to enforce traffic regulations, or to enforce, uh, make sure that all other conditions which need to be complied by a retail cannabis store in the inside of the building or the outside of the building, that the police will have authority to get tickets and to, um, to maintain. The hours of operation, as indicated in our statute, in our ordinance, the store will be open for seven days a week from nine to nine, nine AM to nine PM, and that the light, exterior lights will remain, uh, on for one hour after closing. Um, once again, you've heard me recite what the, what the requirements that outside lighting are, which will be all shielded and will be downward cast.
And Mrs. Solicitor, the applicant indicated that the building lights, the lights on the building may remain on after the one hour after closing.
Okay, I forgive you, this was only one hour high-line lights or the...
The, the whole lights.
Whole lights.
Whole lights will be turned off one hour after closing.
Uh, the applicant has also agreed to, uh, certain recommend, uh, recommendations made by our engineer regarding landscaping, et cetera, which will be noted in any resolution if this site plan is approved this evening. Steve, have I hit everything?
One more thing, just for the record, maybe the comment wasn't as clear. I'll take some call to the office. But the applicant has agreed that the T, uh, 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 drive that intersects the St. Clair right-of-way from their site, which is the drive right down at the building, will be marked as do not enter from the St. Clair side. So, I just want to make sure that is specifically in the resolution. We all read through it already this evening, me and the applicant, and myself from the bridge hearing, just want to make sure that's clear. No objection, Mr. Talbott.
If this matter is approved, I'll consult with your office regarding the specific language to be included. Okay, if that covers everything, ladies and gentlemen, uh, we would need a motion to approve.
Thank you, David. Do I have a motion to approve Resolution twenty-two dash eighteen?
Make a motion.
Second.
Second.
Motion made by Ms. Gotion, second by Mr. Rozak. Ballroom.
Ms. Gotion?
Yes.
Mr. Benelmo?
Yes.
Mr. Rozak?
Yes.
Ms. Farman?
Yes.
Mr. Oakley?
Yes.
And Ms. Walker?
Yes.
Good luck, guys. Tim, what do you suggest?
Call meeting active order at eight thirty-one. Uh, we have application twenty-two zero nine, application of Fassal LLC, eleven hundred North Black Horse Pike, block thirty-two, lot eight, for a conditional use variance and site plan.
Mr. Brown, would you, anybody trying to testify on this, uh, application tonight, would you have them stand and raise their right hand?
Yes, I would have everyone sworn and remain on the line.
All right, but I'm gonna have them, we're doing swearing here, and our engineer, gentlemen, if you raise your right hand, you solemnly swear affirm the testimony you're about to give this board tonight is truthful and accurate, to the best of your knowledge.
Yes.
Tim, before you proceed, do you want to bifurcate this application in order to show your proofs regarding the, why you're entitled to the conditional use approval? Or did you want to try to do it altogether?
Our presentation is based on, though, being done...
Okay.
But the, the, uh, conditional use provision will be done, so...
Okay, all right, that's fine.
It'll be done in order.
Second, we don't have to...
We don't have to, but just so the public knows what they're, what they're presenting for, for what portion of the application.
It can be, can, uh, can be done all as one. Uh, their application for the conditional use approval as well for the site plan approval, the applicant has indicated that their preference, without any objection from the board, that they rather have it combined in one, one application.
They don't want it.
So, we don't have to give the test.
That's fine.
I do, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, good evening. Tim Brown, I represent the applicant Fassal LLC this evening. This is an application, and I apologize to the board, you just heard one, but it's another application for a, uh, retail cannabis facility here in, here in Rondomee Borough. Fassal is a social equity cannabis dispensary company, uh, seeking approval from you for a cannabis, uh, retail license at eleven hundred North Black Horse Pike, and that is block thirty-two, lot eight on your patent. The dispensary, in accordance with the state law, will purchase individually packaged cannabis products. It'll be from licensed cultivators and manufacturers in the state, throughout the state, and they'll sell those products at retail prices to adult customers ages twenty-one and over. It's important to note, this is a retail store, a dispensary. There's no manufacturing, no cultivation, no growing, none of that. Everything comes in prepackaged and is sold at pointer sale kiosk within the facility. The, uh, excuse me, the, uh, application is for a conditional use and site plan approval. I'm sure you heard, uh, the prior applicant testify concerning the conditional use. You're all aware, Mr. Rowan, I'm sure, I'm sure it's given you plenty of guidance in the past. A conditional use application is an application that if it meets the conditions and the ordinance, it's a period of use. It appears before you as a permitted use for a conditional use approval. This is not a use variance. The board does not have to decide if this is an appropriate location for a retail cannabis license. The Borough Council has already decided that. They've adopted an overlay ordinance in your C commercial zone that allows these retail dispensaries in specific locations within your municipality. So, this application does meet all of the conditions, and, Mr. Chairman, I wonder if you will through the ordinance indicate we submitted a narrative of compliance with conditions as part of the application, as part of the record. But if you will go, then when you look through them, our engineer will ratify that, and this testimony will be clear for you and the public, that all these conditions have been met. The first condition is all cannabis establishments, uh, have to have a license, a conditional license from the state. We have. The only thing preventing the applicant from having a permanent license is your approval and the Borough confirming the cannabis retail license. But the state has given us conditional approval for the license already. We've accepted that as part of the state requirement to have to accept the license. We have done that. We are ready to move forward, we're ready to open this facility as soon as we have your approval and the license, uh, confirmed by the Borough Council. No cannabis establishment shall permit onsite consumption, again, no onsite smoking, uh, e, congestion, uh, cannabis products. No onsite consumption is permitted under, under your ordinance. No outside storage of any cannabis products, okay? So, there's no outside storage, no outside activities permitted by your ordinance. The hours of operation, as you already know, are nine AM to nine PM. That is set, seven days a week, that is set by the Borough Council, by ordinance. The, each establishment has to, uh, provide a security plan to be approved by the Rondomee Police Department, and demonstrate how the facility will maintain effective security and control the operations. Again, we have done that. We have a witness, a, uh, who, whose specialty is cannabis security, who's going to testify this evening concerning the operations and the, and the conduct of the, of the dispensary. I gave, as part of the application, I gave a security, we, we provided a security narrative that's right through the state license, it's a six-page document, uh, that outlines everything from security and surveillance systems, including descriptions of access, visitor mandate services, video surveillance, access entry authorization, I think you probably heard from the other applicant, each has the hand traps, you go in the door, the door in front of you is closed, the door closes behind you, then the front doors, and you move, and you enter the dispensary. This is the most heavily regulated industry in the state of New Jersey. It's more heavily regulated than liquor stores, any other uses, a dollar thousand, anything. It's the most heavily regulated industry in the state of New Jersey. It's a new industry, and the state has imposed severe and strict security requirements for this license. The sixth condition is no more than two retail cannabis establishment, class five licenses, retail licenses, will be permitted, at least as, as of now. There are also performance standards, not conditions, but performance standards. There's noise and odor mitigation. Again, we submitted as part of our application, a noise pollution and, uh, odor pollution, uh, mitigation report. There's no odor associated with this operation. There's no noise associated with it. It's a retail store, everything comes in prepackaged, there's no manufacturing, no assembly, no cultivation, as I indicated. This is a retail establishment, it's a store. It sells a product, it comes in prepackaged. Loydering, destruction, or obstruction of the free passage of persons or vehicles in the vicinity of the property should be considered unlawful. We've agreed to that as a condition of approval. I assume that will be a condition of approval in, in, in approval of the board they grant. All operations must be conducted within the building, no operation shall be conducted outside. Again, no outside activities. The no cannabis establishment shall be located within two hundred feet of a house of worship, school, or daycare. We have a specific exhibit that we submitted as part of the application, an air photograph that, that shows compliance with this condition. Our engineer will testify to that. Partner, you have to meet the partner requirements that are specifically provided in the ordinance. In this case, a class five license requires one space for the three hundred square feet of gross floor area. This is an existing site, I think you're all familiar with it, I'm not going to pronounce it, it's an, it's an, if you're wrong, but it, it's an existing facility, existing site. Uh, it has twenty-one parking spaces, almost two times as many as the ordinance, uh, required. And finally, the signs has to comply with the sign ordinance, which we have given you an exhibit that shows the, uh, proposed facade sign, and also the areas of existing, uh, sign mounted on poles that we're going to replace with a nice looking monument sign, just a different, a different, uh, package. The, uh, Fassal LLC dispensary sign, we will be the exhibits to show that. In addition to the conditional use, uh, approval, we, uh, we have not requested any additional like the prior applicant, no additional variances, no new variances, no expansion of any prior variances granted. It's going to be the existing site, pretty much used as a, an only precise addition that we're proposing, is a solid fence, uh, which the engineer will, uh, will confirm, uh, an additional solid fence for additional buffering between our site and the neighboring sites and that. But everything else is the same, there's no expansion of any variance, no new variances, the site is completely conforming to other people's prior and after.
With that, Mr. Chairman, if you have no objection, I'm going to have my engineer testify.
Thank you.
Chirag, you wanted to name, identify yourself for the record, name and address?
Yep, Chirag Takkar, C-H-I-R-A-G, that's my first name, last name Takkar, T-H-A-K-K-A-R. I'm a principal at RNA Engineering, one four five six Ferry Road, Dulles Town, Pennsylvania.
And you're the site engineer for this project?
Yes, I am.
And you're licensed in the state of New Jersey as a, as a professional engineer?
I am.
Your licenses are current and, and standing?
That's correct.
Okay. Could you please, uh, provide the, uh, board with a little bit of your professional experience and your experience in the field of site engineering?
Sure, um, I have a bachelor's and a master's degree in civil engineering from Rutgers University. I've been a licensed professional engineer in the state of Jersey since two thousand and three, have testified in front of multiple boards, um, and I'm licensed in both Pennsylvania.
I'll agree, I'll, no objection, Mr. Engineer.
Okay, thank you. Chirag, before you testify, I provided the board with a summary of our narrative, uh, on conforming to the conditional use standards and conditions in the ordinance. Uh, you heard that testimony?
I did. I did.
And it was correct and accurate?
That's correct.
And you confirmed that testimony?
Yes.
I also provided testimony to the board concerning our narrative compliance with conditions, our noise and odor pollution mitigation report, and the excerpt from the state security narrative for our state license application. Again, that testimony, those documents are correct.
That's correct.
Okay. Can you give the board a brief overview of the site plan for this project?
Yeah, I'll perhaps start with the proximity exhibit because that was one of the conditions, about the 200-foot overlap.
Sure.
To not have schools and place of worship. So what we're looking at is an exhibit that's titled, "Area Proximity Exhibit", I'm not sure if this is mocked in the...
It's already part of the application package, it's been delivered in the package.
So the site's located at an intersection, if you will, of the property line of New Jersey Turnpike.
Can I just interrupt? Could you just move that to the public and see, we will have...
So, maybe I could just move the pointer. So, the site is located at intersection of Black Horse Pike and 11th Street. It also has a shoulder against New Jersey Turnpike, so it's sort of bounded by three rideways. And, and it's, it's, on the rear of the property is the residential zone. The site is approximately 0.66 acres. Same say it contains an existing structure. There are no schools or place of worship within the 200-foot radius, which is demonstrated by this exhibit. It's a, it's a ring that shows around the property. There are parking spaces that exist. There are 21 spaces, there is a one-way circulation. Can go back to the site plan to just give you an idea. So, the building, that is the rectangular shape of the building, Black Horse Pike at the bottom of the page, 11th Avenue to the right. This is the zoning boundary line. There's a one-way circulation of traffic around the building. Access, a full access is off of 11th Street, meaning you can come in, out, left or right. The access onto Black Horse Pike is only exit out. You can't get into the site through a Black Horse Pike. You will have to turn onto 11th Avenue and then get into the site. No modifications made, or proposed to be made in terms of traffic circulation, the curving of the site and everything inside will stay, as Tim had suggested. No addition of any square footage to the building. Really, no material change to the site plan. The utilities are going to be where they are, the stronger facilities will be held. And the only change that is to the, to the site is the, when I'm pointing to it, is the location of the existing freestanding sign, which would be replaced with a code compliant new sign advertising the proposed use.
Question, it says circulation is just very appropriate on maintenance plan.
Sure.
On 11th Avenue, is there no left, no left turn currently existing on the exit and drive from?
That's a full access. I was out there today.
No, the no, no left turn. One through 11th Avenue into the residential neighborhood.
I was out there today, I did not see any sign.
That's right. I didn't see any.
I didn't see a sign restricting any of the exits. I know the Black Horse Pike obviously isn't exit only, but the, the, the full, the driveway on 11th is full.
I'm sorry.
Steve, just let me know if you need a, well, just continue.
I'm sorry.
The engineer, Mr. Fox, do you provide a review letter? He had some comments, let me just run through them with you real quickly.
Sure.
The first comment was the applicant's chapter five documentation, any easements that affects the site. The only easement, Mr. Chairman, on the site is a 1997 wetland public transition area, restriction required by the, I'm giving Mr. Fox a copy. It has no impact on the site, doesn't affect anything on the site.
Mr. Prime, would the applicant agree as a conditional approval to represent that on the site plan in the survey?
Sure.
Just so, maybe you'd reflect it, but the applicant's testimony, if I may confirm, is that it does not have any impact on the development as...
That's correct.
And I got that right because I don't report, so. The application have provided information to the board regarding anticipated number of employees and anticipated number of customers. That's going to be Jim's testimony, we'll have that testimony.
That's correct.
The trash generated, right now, I think he just picks up the trash, the borough picks up the trash. I assume that's what we would propose as well. There's no waste products for the cannabis, it's just office, office paper trash. That would be our proposal. No loading areas existing or goes on the site. And that is correct. We are going to accept deliveries in the existing garage, right?
Yep.
The department of service. We got the size. And there'll be deliveries, they're in a van, I think they're a van size. Tractor trailers or anything like that.
That is correct.
And again, that comes based on the man a couple times a week. It's the applicant's responsibility to ensure that the site was in conformance with the ADA, which we, we agreed.
Yep, we stick with that, yep.
He's just being bored on word fence and mature evergreen buffer between the site and adjacent block, rather than shopping center and plant. And we have to prove, show the location of the proposed mono fencing. If you want to just look at the site plan, there's a, it doesn't show on the site plan, but there's a very mature vegetated buffer around the site.
Yeah, it's actually demonstrated by this bubble line that demonstrates the existing vegetation.
And comment six refers to the mature evergreen buffer along the rear of the existing curb line adjacent to the turnpike. He testified about the proposed fences, the existing basin that must be maintained. The applicant agrees to maintain the basin as required.
That's correct.
Application's over by testimony regarding any proposed signs. Done that with the two, the sign on the building and the sign on the monument sign. Light studies have been performed and confirmed adequate lighting at the site. So you will have to go out with your lighting consultant, have to do a light study to confirm with Mr. Fox that the lighting's adequate.
That is correct.
I assume that it is, it was a pretty busy funeral, but we will confirm. And approval required by outside, we have, have submitted approval to the cannabis claim. Board, they're waiting for the board to act. And our traffic engineer will testify that we have applied through NJDT for what they call a letter of no interest. If you've established that the site does not have a material impact, material increase in traffic from what was there previously, he will give you a letter of no interest. Not required, so.
Mr. Prime, on the fencing.
Yeah.
And Kate said it was pretty magnificent, too dilute and didn't, didn't understand. Were you installing a new fence along the rear perimeter?
Yes, I was out there today, Steve, it's going to be, it's very tight. There's an existing wooden fence, so Chirag is going to have to, with the survey, feel, feel locate where that sign is going to be, and so that, I think, to you for your approval.
Perfect.
Yeah.
And then also the section of fence that cuts off access to the basin, that section of fence will be removed.
That's correct.
Thank you. Back to where my notes were. Sorry. The 11th Avenue, it's a full movement in and out. But it is, they contemplated, and could the outgoing movement restrict left turns into the residential neighborhood on 11th Avenue? You still have the full ability to exit one through the Black Horse Pike from two different locations, one on the exit only on the Black Horse Pike, where you can go left and right on the Black Horse Pike. And you can exit on from 11th Avenue, one through the Black Horse Pike.
So the request would be, you would enter the site from 11th Avenue, and you would leave the site from 11th Avenue, but you would not be allowed to make a left turn out of the driveway that would lead you down into the residential area?
Correct.
Let me just ask my client, it's, it's a new request. I think the only impact would be on any David wants to visit the store, I guess they would walk out.
That's correct. And that's fully understood, so.
I don't think there's going to be a possibility of that.
Totally understood, anybody coming in from 11th Avenue, right, can restrict that.
Right.
What we're trying to do is, if people are visiting the establishment, they understand that they have to go back out to one of the two accesses from the site to the Black Horse Pike.
That's, that's an acceptable condition. I just spoke with our traffic engineer.
Thank you.
And that makes sense, thank you.
I have no other questions.
Where are any questions of Mr. Fox?
So, just so, the first exit right by the turnpike, they can come in and out of it?
No, no.
No.
No, that's out.
Oh, out.
Oh, it's an exit.
So the only way in is on 11th, and you may go left into the building.
And that's the way it is currently, that's the way the funeral home operates.
And Steve, do we have to work for 39, so for that exit sign coming out of the property for the police to have to resist with the...
Yeah, it's titled 39, and... Just making sure, our director's already taken my comment. But is there any objection to the applicant agreeing with that?
No, we would welcome that, that is a very valuable tool for the... Oh, no, no, thank you.
Can you explain the New Jersey DMT, uh, one that says it's not an increase?
Ordinarily, whenever you enter or exit a state highway, you need an access permit from the state.
Mr. Prime, I'm going to, we're going to have to break for Mr. Cameron to explain.
Oh, yeah, yes. I can't do that.
I know you've been doing it a long time, but if you have a trial, you can get it.
I'll put further instructions. Thank you, Mr. Fox. Put me in my place. Maybe a witch, Mr. Horner, ready?
I'm sorry, Mr. Horner, sorry, sorry.
Happened before.
I am so sorry.
All of us are certain age, you know, Horner can't.
Oh, I just...
Dave Evans-Ward, identify yourself for the board, name and address.
My, my name is Dave Horner, H-O-R-N-E-R, Principal and Former Horner and Cancer Associates. Address, business address 105 At Sign Road, Midford, New Jersey.
And you are, give the board a little bit of your background in traffic and transportation engineering education?
I have a bachelor of civil engineering degree from University of Delaware in 1987. Been a licensed professional engineer in the state of New Jersey since 1995. Certified professional traffic operations engineer. Can it publicly quiet while the gentleman's speaking, please? Sorry. Certified professional traffic operations engineer, and have testified before multiple in as to how he's in the state of New Jersey.
No objection, I'm going to give it to you.
I have an objection.
Got anything wrong? Sorry.
Dave, as far as the application, you submitted, we submitted a trip generation report, traffic study type of study, and also a copy of our request to NJDT for a letter of interpretation. Is that correct?
Yes.
Could you summarize those matters to the board, and I guess also answer the question about what a letter of no interest is?
Yes. Yeah, so typically for an application such as this, where it's a repurpose of an existing building or a prior use building, what we do is a trip generation comparison, trip generation comparison, sorry. To compare the uses, just to make sure there's not going to be a significant increase in traffic that affect the face of roadways. So we did prepare that letter, we submitted that to the application. We also prepared what's called a letter of no interest, which I'll explain in a second. But in terms of the trip generation comparison, what we found is that during the busiest hour of this application, it'd be approximately 35 cars in, 35 cars out. That's a little bit higher than what the funeral home was generating, but it's not to the level to be considered any kind of significant impact in traffic. So that gets me to the NJDT requirements. Because this has access to an NJDT roadway, and we're not making any changes to the access driveways or anything within the right of way of DOT, they require for this situation, what's called a submission of a letter of no interest. That is a letter that we put together for DOT to review and approve, and it basically identifies the traffic increases, if there are any, and states affirmatively that we're not doing anything to the access driveways or within the right of way. So we submitted that letter of no interest. It does identify that there is not a significant increase in traffic, and that is actually a identifiable term in DOT's access code. It doesn't generate more than 100 trips in any peak hour over and above what was generated previously. So DOT will respond to that. We expect in the affirmative, it says we agree, no further actions required by, by the state.
I have nothing further to add, Mr. Engineer, unless the board has any questions? Our final witness is Tim Drab.
Do you mind if I use a podium over here?
Jimmy Evans-Ward, could you identify yourself to the board, name and address?
Yes, my name is Jim Chirag, 143 Curtis Avenue, Williamsstown, New Jersey.
I've referred you as a cannabis security expert. Could you please give the board the benefit of your expertise in, in the field?
Yes, I own a cannabis consulting company. I was retired New Jersey State Trooper, 25 years retired as a lieutenant. I was a former CRC investigator for state previously. It was called MMP, not a marijuana program. I did that for a year. I was a director of facilities, security, and public relations for a large MSO, multi-state operator out of Belmar. But I did regional, I was a northeast regional security director, and was in charge of 78 sites. I have a master's degree in business.
I'm offering Mr. Chirag as an expert in cannabis security and operations. Thank you. Could you give the board the benefit of your view of this facility as far as the operations and the security aspects of it?
Yes, so first thing, what, what I did was, we, I got a meeting with the chief. I walked the chief. We have security plans that are part of our display. We do not display them in the public forum. If, if the board would like to see them, I have copies of those. I walked virtually with the chief through the building, the three layers of security, one being surveillance. The state of New Jersey requires a very stringent on security. The last thing that the state does before they give your operator's license is the state investigator walks into the building physically and does the complete security walkthrough. They already looked at all the manuals, all the SOPs, all the checks, you know, has been checked. And basically, they come in, they inspect your vault, they inspect your cameras are operational, they inspect your alarm systems are operational, and that your intrusion alarm systems are working and functioning. After we went through that, the chief had no concerns looking at the plans. Basically, I formulated with the company I worked with before, a national standard when it comes to three-layered security in a cannabis world. This building will be as secure as any facility in your town, including your police department. So it's, it's a high-level, secure building, but it, it, it just doesn't really appear that way. It's, you know, so that, that's a good thing. One of the things that the company does is we trained all the staff. So when I explained to the chief, basically how the security operations work, every person that works in a facility will be trained in security operations facility, including panic alarms. Like, our goal is basically that you'll never even know we're there other than being a retail store. So when we do instructions, we basically explain to them the importance, we'll just touch on panic alarms, that they're not being utilized for other, anything other than strict emergencies. And we have protocols with that. All the staff will be trained, active shooter, emergency operations plans. The fire department, the police department are welcome. They can do a walkthrough of the building prior to it opening. They become very familiar. Basically, we've become partners with the local police chief and the fire EMS. We've become partners, so if they work the building, it's, it's not a concern. All the employees, like I said, they'll go through active shooter, emergency operations, EMS. The only, you know, once in a while, there's calls to facility, it could be just medical emergencies. That's what I found in my experience. In the seven years that I did that, it's mostly medical emergencies. One time we got an air conditioner catch and fire, but it's, it's very little issues. One big thing, the security on, on scene will be third party. They have to be SOAR certified, state registration act through the state of New Jersey, Division of State Police. Security applicants have to go through a course, they have to be certified, they have to be carded. They basically license, it's either SOAR, or it's called HSO, which armed security, would have an armed security badge. Most of the armed security personnel are all retired law enforcement. So with that training, you're getting the 20 or 25 years of training they had, basically comes as a package. If not, we try to, we try to navigate towards military people that, that are familiar with dealing with stressful situations, and basically excel in de-escalation. And, and basically, it just turns into a retail operation.
Jim, can you walk the board through, when a customer comes in, how they, how they are... they, how they are treated and the time it takes to move them through the process?
Yeah, so they pull into the driveway, the security personnel will be, and one way to say, security personnel could be the manager slash security, it could be a physical security person in uniform, uh, that, that person, they'll be greeted as they walk into, they, they brought into the, we'll call it the vestibule, they are identified, normally goes through the scanner, it's very quick, driver's license goes in, it scans, it pops up green that they're 21, and the license appears to be valid. At that point, they verify the picture, that person will then be buzzed into the, into the dispensary, and there's different routes they could take. Uh, the industry standard now, and Steve can attest to this, in the beginning, basically the dispensaries opened and there was no, you could not do online ordering, it just basically became the lock jam. Through, through technology, right now, with people processing through the building, it's, it's at almost 50% debit compared to cash, which is a good thing. Online ordering, kiosks, and then other just regular POS retail. The goal is that the POS retail is the last resort if a person comes there, they're a first-time client, they're gonna be instructed, hey, you can purchase, here's, here's the menu, they call it, and at that point, they're gonna be instructed, hey, next time, you can go online, you come in the door, when you break through that first door into the dispensary, you'll go right through almost an express line. That accelerates the whole process, and it, it can work down to where, basically, you can do a, a five to 12-minute, uh, transaction period. The goal is five to six minutes, dangerous scan.
And you can schedule that, I mean?
Correct, so, for example, and I'll just use a number of 100 people, if you have 100 people coming to the deck, and they place online orders, and you're, you know, say your, your facility could only handle five people, you could strategically, when they get their order, says your order is ready, we could strategically place it in a, in an hour slot to, to separate them people throughout the deck. Instead of everybody coming at eight o'clock in the morning, we can have, whatever, 10 people come at eight, 10 people at nine, 10, you know, and, and so forth, through the, through the calls of the day.
And Jim, I got to jump in here, this facility, the way it's set up on your presentation sheet is much more than a five or a ten person per hour facility?
Correct, yes, yes.
In terms of the amount of, what is how kiosks and such?
Yes.
How many persons do you think per hour this facility will process?
We're looking at about 300 persons per day, so.
300 per day?
Yes.
Over the 99 period?
Yes.
On average, with your, with your scheduling, try to keep that a little.
Yes, yes.
Jim, I made a statement to the board in my usual fashion, uh, this is probably the most heavily regulated industry in the state of New Jersey, is that, was that an accurate statement?
Yes, I, I know that concerns, I did hear concerns there, so for example, with this company here, they have numerous dispensaries, one of the, uh, jobs of the manager, assistant manager, and, or owner of the company, and or the security director, is at the end of the evening, they can actually be peened into security cameras as well as CRC, it has live cameras 24/7. They can monitor the cameras, so in, in the event, say, we'll say we're closed at 9:00. At 9:15, there should be no cars in, in the parking lot, and other than maybe an employee or two, and if so, like Steve said before, the Title 39, the township would be, if the PD roll through, there's nothing supposed to be in the parking lot, and basically, they would be asked to leave. So there's gonna be no loitering, the one thing with the state regs, because they do monitor cameras, I know that for a fact, that there is no using on product, on, some phrases, period. They will be asked to leave, if they decide that they're gonna be repeat, if they do it, and a repeat offender, they are then can be banned from the facility. But we don't really get to that, because people, at the end of the day, my experience with the people coming into the building is they wanna purchase, and they wanna go home and use their product, and try to see their product.
I have other questions, Jim? No questions?
So, I, I think the other thing that the residents are concerned about is, I know you can't make it a left out of there to go down 11th Avenue, Jim, but you know how people are, and again, it happens, but I think they're concerned because it's so new for most of us, is the fact that, hey, they're gonna go and they can get whatever they buy, drive down the street, park on the side, do what they gotta do, and then leave or whatever. I mean, it's always, I, I know you met with the chief, and, I mean, we really gotta do what we have to do to make this, so it's not an issue.
Right, so, so what would happen?
And they, you know, they were dealing with a funeral home that maybe did four a year if they were lucky, uh, but with that being said, this is gonna be more repetitive business, a lot more people coming through, it's, and you can understand the concern.
So, we should train them right the first time?
That's correct.
So basically, one, you're coming in, you're being greeted by the person at the door, doing the, they also can have the dual role, so as people are leaving, hey, just see now, be careful pulling out on the bike, and please do not make a left into the residence. We, it can be a simple message that eventually people get, they kinda get the message, and they, they kinda conform. So that's, you know, inside, it's, it's not like a robotic activity in the building, it's, it's, you know, they're gonna have some discussions, and they're gonna say, hey, you have the vipers bike, be careful pulling out, please do not turn left and go through development as it's against the orders.
Well, the, the, um, provides for the interaction with the police department, one of the parts, parts of the security plan, if I read it correctly, is that they are required, meaning the applicant is required for behavioral circulations and pedestrian circulation for a safe and orderly operation of the facility. If, as all other applications, if there is a disruption to the neighboring residential property, the public roads, that that doesn't mean the applicant can utilize them as an extension of the parking facilities. So, the applicant has the, um, the onus is on the applicant to monitor their operations. Two things can happen if they do not, one, this is a little stronger than other applications, there is a security protocol that is always subject to the running of the police department, the running of the police department can take it up first, and then there's also, then there's zoning enforcement after that. But this is much stronger because as condition of approval than beneath the security plan that I already provide for, and it's up to the police department to, you, you cannot have any disruptions, you know, from long lines or long, long parking, or unlawful parking, or improper parking, that type of thing.
I do have one follow-up question, Jim, um, for reference to prior application, we agreed that, uh, it was agreed that the lights, other than the security lights, could be turned off an hour after it closes, and we can do that through the, through the monitor, uh, monitoring the lighting, I assume?
Yes, we have infrared cameras outside, so the lighting goes off, the camera still will have a red light.
It's apparently dumb, it's sort of, yeah, will you read my paper?
I have a short-term memory, I have a, a memory that's an hour ago. And that concludes our presentation, chief, Mr. Chairman, anybody in the board have any questions? Steve?
Thank you, I refer everyone to our October 12th, uh, 2022 review, the applicant has addressed, uh, all of our comments on how they will comply or will comply with modifications, plus we added the additional, uh, um, requirements, uh, stipulated, I shouldn't say requirement, the additional conditions is already stipulated by the applicant, uh, for the Title 39, they have no objection as long as the borough governing body allows for it, they will show the wetlands, um, the survey and site plan, they will denote what are the appropriate left turn, uh, signage, uh, and striping as necessary, uh, subject to the board engineer's approval, they will provide the, uh, lighting plan, uh, and with the note on the lighting plan, per hour, security lighting, she says, a couple quick notes and backside, uh, with your engineer?
Yes.
Yes. And they will comply with the other conditions regarding that scene landscape that we provided. Again, this is a relatively newer facility in the borough of Runnie, meaning when it was originally built, uh, the site is generally in good condition, I, I think all my comments and concerns have been addressed.
Thank you. Just to clarify, Steve, there are no wetlands on the site, the wetlands, the heat distribution was a wetland transition, they had a transition buffer.
The, the transition area, uh, buffer, uh, we showed, let's, let's sort of this way, any, any, any restricted deeds covenants, which the, uh, is indicated only one, will be plotted on the survey and planning appropriately.
There was a legal description on the, on the, we can do that.
I think we have two more questions from the board.
So, I understand that, um, there's gonna be, you can bring it up so that, you know, 300 people don't show up at one time, 100 people don't show up at one time, but is there any security plans that prevent lines around the block or any type of long line? And are there any security measures for that?
Uh, I'll let, I'll let Jim address that, please.
Yeah, so in past experiences with a very busy dispensary, utilizing security personnel in the, in the facility as well as the manager or assistant manager, they would basically stop the vulnerability, go out and make sure they can mitigate any issues that transpired with a longer line.
One of the things I think that you have to keep in mind, because this is such a new thing, but the, the, your lights are, are being issued all over Tapeworsia, I know each has off, probably five of them, and we just did one there, um, they can authorize two here, once the novelty wears out, I think it's really more like a, a busy weekend.
Yeah, so, to, to elaborate on that, one of the main issues in the beginning with the long lines is the lack of product, so basically, it was restricted to an eighth, instead of two ounces, one ounce, two ounces, three ounces, it was one eighth, and, and I'm talking about curate. So basically, you had people showing up, lining up for a half a block, two blocks, to buy one eighth, because they had to restrict the, because there's no product. Now, with multiple state operators, multiple dispensaries in the Gloucester County, Camden County area, that is, and, and I've surveyed, Elan County, Gloucester County, Cumberland County, uh, not Cumberland County, I'm sorry, but Gloucester County, Camden County, and Elan County, and so far, they haven't had those issues, because the product, there's, you know, there's 700,000 square foot of canopy growing in the state compared to back when Steve and I dealt with Belmar, there was 50,000 square feet of canopy for the whole state of New Jersey. So it's, the product is there now, so now it basically dissipates the issues, you know, and curate is, is a little bit unique because they are a vertical operation, so they control the price, the prices, and on the weekends, of course, if the prices are, they're cheap, people are coming, so, the, the other operators that are single, you know, uh, the five, you know, the fives out there, they're just gonna be just recount locations, and, and the guest limit, i- is basically, is like three or four hundred people.
And I, I'll go follow-up question. The Belmar operation, you're tracking that through startup of retail all the way through to today?
Yes, I built that all on my own.
So, have you noticed a decrease in the lines around the building?
Yes, yes.
And what would you attribute that mainly towards, the larger volumes?
It's, well, it's larger volumes, there's more retail.
Of, of cannabis you buy.
Oh, yeah, and now, like, the market is fluttering out of product, so they're, they're, they're not running out of product, you know, surplus drain they may run out of, but it was always where it was restricted to an eighth, those restrictions are no longer in place, so that, basically, that eliminates that issue now.
So I believe there's another large, uh, facility in Deathwood?
Yes, yes, Williamsstown is one, in Williamsstown, Deathwood, we're on the same, we're all we can play, yes.
I just, I was just, I was just thinking, you know, if it could be like, you know, at or where you had to make an appointment to go get your, your.
Well, they could, yes, eventually, it could get to that, right now, with the kiosk online ordering, it really assists everyone, it assists the township, it assists the retail location, it assists the persons, because now, they don't have to rush there to try to get in there in the morning, they know, they do an online order, it's, their product is locked, it goes into a bag, it's sitting there waiting for them at 3:30 and a half a minute when they get done with. It, it, it leaves the whole issue of before, when COVID hit, that was a totally different happen, like, and I worked there, so I know about it, so, we, as Steve said, as all these other operators open, you're gonna see everything just kinda dissipate to, uh, just a normal retail operation.
And do most people order online?
It's about 50, it's right now, it's about 50%, so, and, and the goal is, it's all education-based, there's a certain demographic, like, you know, smartphones, that people can navigate it now, and if, if not, they can walk in and there's a kiosk, as soon as they come in, they can go to a kiosk, it basically doesn't affect their, their lines, they get in the kiosk, it goes right to the back, they call it pick and pack, basically they pick it, they pack it, and by the time they get to the retail POS station, it's ready. So there, all these different methods are used to expedite the, the on-premise time to reduce it to something that's very functional.
And POS is going to sell that, if that's adverse, will they check it out?
Yes. And with, and with the campaign cash, it's, it's easier now, because they can pay you ahead of time, with the campaign and a debit card, I'm sorry, guys.
Is, uh, the second floor saying a residential?
To storage for now, not to use.
Okay, because I was just worried about that with parking for that, that you remain?
We want to preserve the market, we'll put this.
Was it?
Let the view rent that out?
No, so right now, right now, their application has nothing to do with any dual use, this is for a class V, uh, cannabis dispensary, no residential use, and that's, that's the conditional use that they're seeking this evening as far as their supply plan approval, it's class V cannabis, so they can't, they can't use the residence portion to rent it out as an apartment or anything else like that, that is not their application, and.
And the security standards fit, they match that space also, they have to match what's in the dispensary, so it's covered, 100% in that space.
I have a question, uh, as far as curate, roughly, what percentage of the business is medical as opposed to residential?
Right now, they're, I believe it's 46, uh, 40/60 right now, so 40% medical, so the medical also, they, the medical patients kind of learn to navigate, like, when they get online ordering now, and so before, basically, they all, everyone was medical, they're like, well, I'm a medical patient, well, sorry, so is the other 50 people behind, now, they have preferential treatment at curate, medical has to have its own separate line, and they have to have a certain amount of product available to them way over in the adult use side, like, medical has to deal to get the proper medicine.
Are there designated, uh, times for medical?
Medical, if, over there, it's the first hour prior to opening, like, you know, say they open at 9, 8 to 9, is their hour, and then the last hour of day, uh, adult use is shut down, say, whatever it is now, 7:00, and 7 to 8 is medical, because they have to have preferential, uh, access.
But we can't do that here?
No, no, we don't.
Not even on.
Right, thank you.
Any other questions from the board? Okay, like, at this time, going to be up to the public? Can you state your name and your address?
Chairperson, this is 3rd Avenue, 22 West Fifth Avenue, Runnie. Uh, I've worked in the, uh, Belmar Business Park for 12 years, been faithful to same business, and coming home from rush hour is fun, at that point in the day, I, as much as I appreciate the police presence in both Belmar and Runnie, uh, we can't catch them all, and the people flying down the lanes is interesting, coming all the way from Beningo, or Benidale, all the way up to Constitution, uh, as a regular occurrence. And I walk it, there are multiple times, and I can actually walk faster than the cars that are piled up there. So, question being, I did do a little bit of really quick research, so forgive me if anything is incorrect here, um, but I believe was stated that the, uh, amount of traffic would be, uh, roughly in the same ballpark as, uh, what is current, did I get it properly or did I hear that improperly?
That is what the traffic agent here testified to, uh, with the trip generation report that was submitted to the board.
Understood, thank you. Uh, so, just some quick research, I understand that, uh, perhaps not, it's not a whole encompassing research project, of course, I admit that, uh, but looking at the Chichinazki website, there, uh, at least are 11 documented vitrories in the last 365 days, uh, and I will read the timeframes of those in order from oldest to most current, 9:00 AM, 10:00 AM, number two, family only, no times committed, number three, 9:30 AM to 10:30 AM, by the way, these are all weekdays, uh, 9:00 AM to 11:00 AM, 9:00 AM to 10:00 AM, uh, family only, 9:00 AM to 11:00 AM, 9:00 AM, I'm sorry, 10:00 AM to 11:00 AM, 9:30 AM to 10:30 AM, 8:00 AM to 9:30 AM, 9:30 AM to 11:00 AM, that was the most recent one, I believe, in the. That was the most recent one, I believe in 2012.
I believe maybe a good question to, and if I may try to assist, a good question to Mr. Horner, and I will never make that mistake again, I probably won't. If you could provide, the comparison is to actual people leaving the facility, or the, what the facility is rated for in Belmar? And I think that would be helpful to the public. When you do your trip generation comparison between the existing funeral home use, I don't mean to leave the witness, but you're looking at the use as it could be used for a funeral home, not the actual number of trips coming out in the day, correct?
That's correct, to say in my words.
Please.
Yeah, when we do our comparison, or required to do basically by the ordinance and by the EOT requirements, is we're looking at what that building has the funeral home use can generate in its peak hour.
Potential.
Compared to what the cannabis facility will generate in its peak hour, doing that comparison.
Okay, that makes sense.
So we weren't looking at the existing operation in terms of what funeral home is scheduled?
For sure, and to be fair, I'm not assuming that there's no funerals that didn't show up on the website, just to be clear, I understand that that could be a thing.
And Dave, nor do we do it specifically for this dispensary, it was also based on the industry, right?
Correct, yes.
So neither, both of them, not this facility, not this facility, but.
The general, kind of area based, okay, that's, that is super helpful, I definitely appreciate that. Of course, I am no, I have no expertise, don't claim any expertise in traffic studies or anything of that nature, other than experiencing it like the rest of us do. But it does seem like perhaps deviation from potential versus reality, that, that seems to be the one that people would actually care about, that's what I would care about. Some pretty much manage to every department in my manufacturing complex, and I, many of my employees, I hear all their, I hear the rumors, the murmurs, potential clients perhaps. It's going to be a rush, there's, there's no doubt, that is going to be significantly different. Now, of course, they have a choice between Curly on the one end of the business park, and of course, the two proposed in Runnymede. But to say that that's not going to have any significant real impact on rush hour traffic, frankly, I believe that's a joke. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hey, Gary, 39th Plaza Place. In regard to some of the things I've heard from the previous applicant, is there any restriction on the type of vehicle that will be bringing the product into the facility? I think we have that on the, I believe we need to, there's no factory pay, or is there a delivery day in? As far as trash, I know that the products coming in aren't prepackaged, accidents happen. What happened if the product gets damaged, opened, broken? What, what kind of, so basically, just.
Way to handle that.
So basically, when product comes in, it's manifested, it's documented, it goes from the, where they purchase from, their internal management system, to their internal management system, if product is damaged, the reverse happens, it basically goes into a quarantine in the safe. It's manifested, it's serialized, serialized, at that point, the vendor that is dropping off, say, the next Wednesday, they would take possession of that product, it goes back to the manufacturing site, and gets destroyed as per state guidelines. It doesn't get thrown out of the trash, it's very strict. It's, it's basic quarantine, it's, it's a redlined item that has to go back and be tracked.
So that would be picked up by, by the accident facility?
Yes, by the other party, correct.
Okay, okay. I guess while you're here, looking at your foot traffic, the studies from 99, 300 people, is it fair to say that the customers are your typical average people that are working during the day? So that 300 people could really be consolidated down to five to nine, as opposed to spread out nine to nine?
So my experience is, it's a little bit busier first day in the morning, and that, often, it has to do with early birds, rising, waiting, they want to be the first one in line. And then at the end of the day, obviously, people getting done work, but most of the experience now, it's, because people work different shifts, it's not, out there, you know, now, it's not, I don't know, I never had an 84 job, but basically, it's kind of spread out through the day. It's a little busier in the morning, and like I said, most time we had, you know, where we had a couple people in line early, was early birds, they're trying to be the first one to do it. That's it.
Okay, thanks.
I guess as far as traffic, I've lived in the town almost my entire life, so if I was coming here, I'd go down Central Avenue. If I was coming from Byrington, I'd come through the industrial parking lot, right? Is there any consideration for the residents to close the 11th Avenue entrance? And just have the people come in and out of the Black Horse Pike? It's no different than the Walla, right, or 7-Eleven, or any other.
You got a lot of, the state won't let us do that, the Black Horse Pike, out on the next one driveway.
On both driveways?
Oh, there's only one driveway.
Oh, okay, I thought there was two driveways on Black Horse Pike.
Nope.
And that's only X it out.
Maybe X it out.
X it out.
And the state will allow it, or county will allow it, or do that?
State.
Because that's the way I would go, I mean, the way the people are going to come down, they're going to come down Central Avenue, up 11th Avenue, and Y, right?
That is absolutely a possibility, just like the existing, so.
Could I ask, traffic study, was the traffic study done as a generalization? Or was it done specifically for recreational marijuana facilities?
It was done specifically for recreational marijuana facilities, not specifically this site in particular, but the data we have to use is a compilation, the Institute of Transportation Engineers have a, sent a data specifically for this type of dispensary.
And was that at a zip code level, or at a state level?
It's actually at a national level. But it's, it basically goes by the rate per square footage of a building, a large building, after generating more traffic.
Okay, there is, I don't know if you're aware, there are independent studies done by the state of California, Oregon, and Washington, at a zip code level for recreational marijuana facilities, what that traffic pattern was prior, and what it is after, and from 2018 to 2020, fatalities have gone up 5.9%, just to, just so you're aware. Thank you.
Thank you.
I also, I have one question, I forgot. Shame on me, the pool already passed, we caught him up, but it would really be a both hand. Questions for the applicant, or representative? Ace Thurman, 20 West Fifth Avenue.
Thank you.
As far as product line, this is, I know this is not zoning necessarily, but will there be products sold that has the Delta 8 slash THC components anywhere at all in the product line, to your knowledge? Presently, it is legal.
No, don't be, it's not permitted.
I thought injury is still about it, for now.
Not, not in the dispensary, not.
Not, there's not a classified dispensary.
We're, we're limited to.
Sorry, I'm sorry, if you're going to be speaking, you've got to come up and give your name and address and.
You've been sworn.
Yeah, but you just have to, just so, secretary.
I have powers on regulatory compliance council for, for, so we're under a different standard. We have, we have the County Street Commission regulations that we have to follow in state law.
Sure.
People who sell Delta 8, they don't, they're not under that type of license. We're stuck with what each state has, the sound of the Delta 8.
Okay, could you, just for state, for sake of the fact that I'm not very familiar, would you mind explaining that to me? Delta 9, or Delta 9, is that the CBD you're referring to, that's more of the non-quote high?
Delta 8 is for.
I know Delta F for that.
It's a, it's a synthetic product.
Okay, okay, understood. And then the, brings to mind a very recent, October 21st article, a Virginia mother charged with her son's THC gummy death. Six-year-old ingested mother's CBD, and that brought to mind a good point made by one of my neighbors. On the facility, of course, things are going to be kept, I expect, tip-top shape, very much sounds to be the case. But as far as anything that's discarded along the way in the neighborhood, has that been considered, are there any children in the neighborhood? I'll be speaking later on in the good and welfare portion, specifically for a different, the memorialized portion of today's meeting. However, with the liquor store down very across the street from where I live, on West Fifth Avenue, the amount of empty liquor bottles, the amount of needles, the amount, the amount of vehicular vandalism caught on tape, public urination, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, dramatically increased when the liquor store moved across the street from us, from where it was. I can, that's one thing, empty liquor bottles are one thing, any kind of gummies, like for my six-year-old, or the three-year-old on my street, et cetera, et cetera. If that proves fatal, this is going to be a much different story. Just wanted to be able to state that, considerations, thank you.
Just my experience, just as an attorney who represents a number of local state operators and small-time operators, people are buying product, they're not tossing it out, they're taking it home and using it, they're not discarding it, it's not, that, these are childproof packaging, it's required in the state, there's certain packaging laws that are followed, or regulations that are followed, but I'm not aware of people tossing, frequently tossing unused product on the street because of the fact that it's a product.
Thank you. You also told questions to speak?
Just a quick question, is there, how much of your business are you planning on having by appointment only? Is there anything that you're planning to help kind of control the out and flow of business, being most impactful during rush hour?
So, so the goal is obviously to dispense product, our goal also is to not be a nuisance to the neighborhood. So we would try to facilitate whatever way, like, online ordering is like the goal, and to facilitate that, we could spread it through the day. So if that's your question, yes, that's, the goal is to have people be able to come in the building, the goal is five minutes. Park your car in the facility, out. Industry standard is like, right, eight to 12 right now, but with the online ordering mechanism, which is new, it started in April of this year, with another big MSO, and it's, it's taken off with other companies, the goal is to spread that throughout the workday.
Okay, now I'm glad you're, you guys are taking measures to consider that, I'm just curious, what is the capacity of your facility at a given time?
The capacity, I don't know what the ordinance is, it's, it's the capacity would be the fire capacity.
The fire.
I think it's.
So how many customers can visit your facility at a given time, what can you guys handle?
How many customers?
Ma'am, can you please speak into the microphone, because.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, so I'm just curious, how many customers, what is capacity for you, how many people can visit your facility to purchase at one given time?
So basically, we'll have eight POS stations, and there'll be 10 kiosk stations, so at any given time, there could be up to 15, 18 people in the facility. Now, what you have to do is you have to look at the local fire ordinance, and I believe it's three square feet per, it's three people per, three, whatever it is, it's formulaic, that you have, the capacity thing goes on the building, you can have no more than 200 people in the building. Obviously, with, with the way the flow of the building is, it would be most likely 15 to 20 people in the facility at any, at the peak, at the peak.
Thank you, how many parking spaces are there now?
There's 21.
Thank you.
There's actually 23, because there's two inside that the staff could use.
Is there a plan if there is a wait for more customers to enter for your facility, and where are they being parked?
Yeah, so basically, if in the event it gets to that, that issue, which we don't anticipate, what we've done in other facilities is we have onsite, we have actual satellite parking, offsite, down the road it could be, down, right down the road in Runnymede, there's, there's the tow truck place, like, there's different, in other municipalities, we've used satellite sites, I'm not saying.
Is that some part of the proposal?
I just want to clarify, I just want to clarify, Mr. Frum, there's nothing in the application materials.
Correct.
Regarding any satellite parking, or the use of satellite parking.
She just, it was like an arbitrary question, so.
Right, right, now I.
That's absolutely correct.
I just want to make sure, revert to what's there. There's no satellite parking, that is, that is at all associated with this application.
That's correct.
That's correct.
And you should also be aware that in other locations, the operator has range for Uberized for employees, if they're that busy, so. They, they also have options doing that for their employees, if it gets to be too busy.
Ma'am, I'm going to answer up a follow-up question, which I think will kind of go into what you were saying.
Okay.
If you exceed your, your projections, and you're more, more successful than you could possibly imagine, your security plan requires you to maintain control of your pedestrian and vehicular visits to your facility. If you exceed that, you are going to be required to fix it.
Correct.
All right, otherwise, you're going to be violating your security plan, and if you're in violation of your security plan, you can't operate.
Correct.
All right, just want to make sure.
Yes, absolutely.
If that's necessary, so, so if, and it has happened with other cannabis facilities, if they are required to change operations, they must appear back before this board, so there's nothing here except for what's been represented as part of this application. But they have to change alterations, they got to come back and make an amendment to the application, and provide notice of.
So my next question, just to follow up, and I understand that all of this, you know, is not currently before us, and this is all speculation, or what could come, so I know we can't write anything in stone, but who would be in charge of knowing whether or not they're exceeding their capacity, and whether or not parking is really truly being followed by the facility?
I'm going to answer that as I can, Mr. Trump, two things. One, the security plan requires the Frumby Police Department to have interaction with the licensing. If they, if they get to open through the final part of the process, so the police department will be monitoring this. I have conversations with Chief Sapolsky, he's fully aware of the challenges of a brand-new visitor facility, and he'll be keeping track. The second part of that, which is absolutely already in municipal ordinance, is zoning official. So if they exceed anything under the approval, if they're successfully exceeding, that is provided for by the resolution, and they exceed any of those requirements and cause of nuisance, they get a zoning violations issue to them, they don't even be correct, then they get fined, if they don't correct it for that, they get taken to court with fines, so there's already provisions in place.
And how many times can they, I don't want to say more, but how many times can they essentially receive a fine, receive a punishment, receive a slap?
That is a great ques, that's a great question, and there is no set answer, going case-by-case basis, as administered by the courts usually, when you get into a, a maintenance property or a zoning dispute. And I'd be interested in saying, to my solicitor, I always have to double check for legal questions. Yeah, but, but I will say, for the residents, you heard about the test from me, is you know what the operation is. If you have a concern, you have absolutely every right to contact the zoning officer in the borough, and to, you know, voice your concerns and complaints. You know, eyes and ears.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. True, at large fields, sometimes there's problems, you forget, like, 100 people, 100.
Don't think they had any.
No.
Good try.
He's on the, I have a great street, it was behind me, showing a building, it was just for me, so, forgive me. Ace Thurman again, 20 West Fifth Avenue, if you've not already memorized that question, and I, again, am not an expert, so I will also rely on, get your names, I apologize, yes. But I am reading from oracle.com, article, is Delta 8 legal in New Jersey, dated October 3rd, 2022. Summary is as follows, hemp-derived Delta 8 is legal in New Jersey, state law allows for use, possession, sale, distribution, purchase, marketing, and production of Delta 8 products. Marijuana-derived Delta 8 is also legal, hemp- and marijuana-derived THC ice creams, such as Delta 10, THC, and THC slash those are legal, and as are hemp and marijuana-derived CBD drops.
I got a question for you.
Forgive me, please, yes.
We're obligated to sell only the products that we're allowed to by the CRC. Other vendors, other microstores, whatever, gas stations, they can sell Delta 8, they can sell the products. that are licensed to the state. We were specific licensed to sell a specific product. We cannot go beyond that.
So nothing you have has THC in it that it's mistakenly having in the neighborhood?
They're all THC drugs.
THC has to put the CBD. Forgive my ignorance.
I think, I think what the applicant has said on several occasions, and correct me if I'm wrong, is they are regulated to sell a, whatever products that the, their license as a cannabis retailer, the Cannabis Regulatory Commission will permit now, as currently exists, or as they may change, meaning the Cannabis Regulatory Commission may change. So they are restricted to that. So if the Cannabis Regulatory Commission says you can't sell T-shirts anymore, they're not going to be selling T-shirts. You know, so it's, it's up to whatever the state regulators are. And that's sort of outside of anything that we can draw on this board.
Oh, for sure.
So, all right.
For sure.
Make sure.
And just, yeah, and just to clarify, and thank you.
Is that correct, sir?
Correct. And Delta Eight is, has been, become a problem for, for marijuana businesses because it's not regulated. And so you've got these places opening up all over the place, you see the smoke shops, you'll, you know, you'll see products everywhere. They don't make the investment that days-old and developed companies do in terms of how you can comply with the state regulations for security requirements and capital investment. And so that is the issue, what we, we are regulated and limited to the products that we have. Licenses are at a premium, only two are being given out by Runnymede. So they will not be selling products that they're not allowed to sell according to the Cannabis Regulatory Commission. It jeopardized their license with the state with the municipality. And there's too much involved in that investment. Delta Eight, again, we don't control that, we don't sell it. I agree, it is problematic.
Sure, thank you.
You're welcome.
As a comment to the board, in regards to this, following the letter of the law is one thing. Following the spirit of the law, in consideration of the help of the children of our town is the only other matter in the vision. That is my approach to you in regards to this resolution. Thank you.
Anything else for the politics to speak on the side? Do you have a motion to close the public portion?
Motion to close.
Motion made by Mr. Vrenelles, second by Ms. Gushen.
Okay, Ford, this is an application to part to approval of a conditional use and for the establishment of a Class V cannabis retail dispensary and a certain review. Speaking first of the conditional use, our ordinance 39, 395-26 sets forth the conditions which have to be met before a marijuana store, Class V retail dispensary can be approved. You're all familiar with those, those requirements. And the requirements were set forth on the record by Mr. Prime and have been reviewed by our engineer. If you're satisfied that all of those conditions have been met, you have no other alternative but to approve the use of this location. If you feel that they have not been met, or there isn't one that has not been met to your satisfaction, you can deny the application as far as a conditional use. Once again, if you're satisfied that everything has been met, the conditions, then you're bound by law, you must approve. Now we look at the site plan. You've seen the site plan application, you've heard testimony. The site plan is, is an existing building on the Black Horse Pike. You have, apparently there is no variances required except for certain parts of our ordinance which are pre-existing conditions. If you do not believe those, the continuance of those pre-existing conditions are detrimental to our zoning ordinance, you can approve a variance that they, that this applicant may be permitted to continue those, those variances that have either already been given or which are pre-existing. You can also place conditions on any site plan approval. We've spoken tonight, or both the applicant and our engineer, that one condition is that no left-hand turn shall be permitted onto Seventh Avenue, which leads into our.
Eleven.
Eleven. There's only four off.
No left-hand.
Yes, no left-hand turns onto the left. Another condition is that the applicant says he has no objection to the, what's that worth in title? 39 of New Jersey statutes annotated and that the town is, will or will adopt a, a resolution or whatever they need to do to allow the police to go onto this site to, to enforce any motor vehicle laws and parking ordinances or other, other violations which may occur on site. Another condition is that the applicant, I believe, has agreed that they will provide a lighting plan for review by our engineer. You have seen the engineer's letter dated October 12th. There were certain other review comments, which I will not enumerate all of them, but the applicant has agreed to, to revise and reform this plan to, to show those comments. So they be, they will be incorporated into the site plan if you, if you deem to approve the same. The applicant is also, there was talk about easements, which.
And any, any easements or covenants that restrict the property shall be represented on the site.
On the site plan. And I believe Mr. Prime said that that would be, that would be included. Mr. Bach, have I forgotten something?
No.
Absolutely, correct me.
I was very glad. The image that.
Yeah, Title 39. So you'll be, take, a motion should be made if you feel that the conditions have been satisfied under 395-26 of our zoning ordinance and for approval of the site plan with the conditions up and noted.
Thank you, David. Do I have a motion to approve Application 22-09?
I'm making a motion first.
Second. Second.
Motion being made by the solution, second by Mr. Roson.
Ms. Gushen.
Yes.
Mr. Vrenelles.
Yes.
Mr. Roson.
Yes.
Ms. Farman.
Yes.
Mr. Rockley.
Yes.
And Ms. Walker.
Yes.
Thank you very much. Congratulations guys.
I'm sorry.
Yeah.
You're a horn. I'm sorry.
Big goose.
S H E E.
S H E R R A R D.
R R A R D. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Chairperson's report. I have enough to report tonight, other than wishing this thing out or speed you recovery.
Yeah, how is she doing now?
She's still well. At this point, I might open meeting up for Good and Welfare. Anybody in the public wishing to speak, well, please state your name and address. Thank you.
I'm Trusowski, my address is nine Bondare Road, Edison, New Jersey. My question is related to.
What town, New Jersey?
I'm sorry.
Town, New Jersey.
Edison.
Edison, okay, thank you.
My question regards to Resolution 2219 under Old Business. It was not open to the public. And I was curious why procedurally that was not open for discussion to the public.
That was, that was a resolution memorializing a prior action by the board. The action by the board, I believe the date was, was.
Twenty eighth, September twenty eighth.
September.
Yeah, September.
Right, so.
The agenda item for the 20, for September stated that completion review. It was not a resolution that was introduced, so.
Yes, it was.
It was. That's not what the agenda said, but if you say was.
The agenda doesn't control the actual resolution and action slide board that controls. So there is a resolution that was memorialized this evening that memorialized the action that was taken on the Greenhouse Gardens application on September 28th. At that time, that application was open to the public for.
And it was deemed incomplete.
Correct. By an action.
Incomplete on September 28th.
Correct.
And then the resolution is prepared after that meeting and it's acted on on the next meeting. It's just a memorialization of what was decided on the 28th.
If you have a motion for it and then vote for it, is that not considered?
No, no.
It is.
No, it's not. That point's not.
It is a vote of memorialization.
But it was open to the public on the 28th and then they voted on it.
But then if you're going to vote again, you shouldn't proceed your.
No, no. The resolute, tonight we memorialized it, which means we signed a resolution.
And you guys didn't vote? I thought I heard a vote. There was a motion to vote and then you voted.
So, under provisions of Municipal Land Use Law, right? Provisions of Municipal Land Use Law is when an application is being determined, one of the answers is for completeness, one of it is for a C variance, you know, bulk variance, the other one is for a conditional use approval. That is an application. When the application is being delivered, meaning that it's in standing and is deemed complete by the board to be heard as a land use board application, then they go through the procedures. That's what is provided by the applicant. And the board today asks questions and then it's open to the public as part of a land use board application that is deemed to have standing and complete. So, all right, all right, sorry, let me move this place, all right? That is what did not occur on September 28th. On September 28th, the application was deemed incomplete by the board. So it never had standing to be heard as an application. As an abundance of caution, it was still open to the public for comment before the vote, board did their final deliberations and took their vote. Now that is that process. This evening, this is almost similar when you memorialize a resolution to memorializing minutes of a prior meeting. The, the resolution is a representation of what occurred at the, the meeting that it refers to, of a prior meeting. So that is not a new action by the board. That is just asking for the board, board, do you agree? And only the members that participated in that meeting can vote on that memorializing resolution. Do you agree with the representation of what occurred when the meeting represented in the, the resolution of memorializing? Do you agree that that is factual as, as stated in the, in the resolution? That is the purpose of that, not to take any new action, but only to memorialize and say for the record that these are accurate and true representations of those received. Is that fair to say, Mr. Trump?
That's correct, yeah, that's correct.
Is there a reason there was not a resolution this evening to, such as, if there was a resolution determining that there was a completed application for FISO, that was new business? Would that not, would that not have been required to? If you're saying last month there was a resolution that was stating that the application was deemed incomplete?
I didn't, I don't have my letter completed for this application, but I can represent based on my review to date. I'm finding the application for Greenhouse Gardens as subsequently submitted on September 28th to be complete and will be ever received to a land use board as scheduled by the Planning Board Secretary and the Planning Board Chairwoman. So I don't see why it would not be deemed complete as currently submitted under the September 28th submission. I'm sorry, September 22nd submission.
And when was the FISO submission?
The 13th.
Of October?
September received by the Planning Board Secretary on the 13th, I believe. Our office received it on the 14th.
I got on the 13th.
Right, well, we usually.
So the application for FISO was submitted, a completed application was submitted on September 13th? That's the date?
I believe that's the date, I don't have the file here.
I have, only from the file records that I have, I have, the signed application was dated on the 13th. We received it with our own timestamping box, it says BC timestamp on the 14th. I had the further planning board secretary in the borough hall.
I have the stamped copy.
Right, and we all, particularly municipalities and firms like myself, we always find them when we receive them. So any further inquiries in terms of timestamping and everything else, you reach out to the board's, board secretary or also the borough board.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Sir, that runs 20 West Fifth Avenue. More questions about that, just for our knowledge. It is absolutely posted in all these acquired areas and so forth. Personally wasn't aware of it, that's not, that's, I am at fault. So now when it comes to, comes home a bit more, and this is how we act. So I am speaking predominantly in regards to Greenhouse Gardens, which I understand were memorialized. And thank you for asking the question, I was going to ask the same thing. So that clears that one off. And I could have missed it on the website, I do not see any minutes posted for any of the planning zone. It's just a blank column, the left is our agendas, on the right is minutes. That notwithstanding, is there a summary as to why it was incomplete? Like what was incomplete about it? Is that?
There, there is a very specific review provided by my office that was put on the record as part of that application. Contact the board secretary, I'm sure you provide it in one mechanism or another.
Okay, so it is available. And, and, forgive me, I didn't quite follow everything as far as the dates of 22nd. Has the Greenhouse Gardens, which has since completed the application?
I have not issued formal correspondence, but I can say on the, on the record that we are very close to issuing correspondence on the application. And in my opinion, the application is complete as, as they have submitted on September 22nd. There are still review comments and still there are concerns and items that need to be addressed as well as some potential relief that the applicant must seek for a site plan approval by in terms of completeness and being able to be property for the board and have standing for an application. Subject to any, I got to be careful here, subject to any public notice requirements in terms of paper and notice requirements, according to the land use law. But I, that's where they're at right now.
Great, well, thank you for that, appreciate that. So at this point, is there, again, I just forgive my life, my, my take here, is there any possibility of the two establishments' applications from tonight not seen, being seen through to completion? Or is it the game's still on?
That's not for this board, even for the Good and Welfare portion. So we are solely charged as a land use board, planning board here to operate under the Municipal Land, or Land Use Law provisions and the authorities and duties and provisions prescribed to a planning board. In terms, right now, we have been charged to review applications. We have applications for many different things that have gone before us. We look at the law that is provided to us by state statute, Municipal Land Use Law, as well as our borough ordinances. In terms of other provisions of, and conjecture of, will this one proceed through actual development? Will this one not? Will this one receive final licensing from the state? Will this one receive final licensing and approval from the borough? All that stuff is completely outside of anything that we have any jurisdiction.
Sure, that makes sense. It's becoming abundantly clear that this is not the only meeting that we should be attending. And that's a lesson learned. And it's a lesson learned, is, all around lessons somehow. So in this, it sounds like all, all three establishments are still in the game at this point, however, they, uh, see, section C six, based on only two classified retail businesses we allow, essentially at this point is it the first two to the finish line?
That is not under this, this board's jurisdiction. That is governed by.
That's what the meeting.
They're, they're, right now, in our ordinance, we, we just follow what is the conditional use provisions and what is a site plan and what is requirements there. That's the only thing that we deal with. In terms of who gets licenses and who doesn't and what order and all that stuff, that's completely outside of what we deal with.
Sure, that's great, yeah, I'm, I'm getting quite the education, I definitely appreciate that tonight. To your knowledge, are there any other retail businesses or cannabis applicants looking at the four thirteen North Flatwater Pike property? As far as your, your purview is.
I don't know of four thirteen.
Uh, block twenty-two, the, the former police station.
This is the green, the greenhouse garden?
Yes.
We have one application for the greenhouse gardens facility before the planning board.
That, that's not a good.
That's, that's my understanding, Joyce, right? I have.
Many, many phone calls from other.
Yeah, I have, I have.
Official or?
We have one, we have one pending application, which was the one that was submitted on September twenty-second, and that's the one I was, have been referring to.
Awesome, all right, very much appreciate that. And really seems like the rest of my talking points are gonna be better suited for the town council. I appreciate your patience with me and myself and my wonderful neighbors.
I have people out.
Clearly, my entire street feels the same way, and the view of, the range of views goes from complete legalization to absolutely moral, abysmal things, and moderate views, but not a single person disagreed with the incredible impact it will have on our wonderful street of thirteen miners, which I'll make sure that's put out there. Thank you very much for your patience. It's a storm.
I appreciate you coming out.
Oh, I did notice on the minutes for the town council that.
Back up to the white.
I did notice, I did notice on the minutes for the town council that some are remote, some are not, and remember first one planned, this is totally outside the scope of this meeting, I get it, but.
They're all live now.
If they're all live.
They haven't been removed.
Okay, I just noticed the first paragraph said remote, some of them, I didn't know if there was some, we're still zooming or, or not.
We saw the provisions to be remote if advertised for such, because you never know what's gonna happen in a month from now.
I agree.
But right now, the next, the next meetings are scheduled, and as posted on the website, it will change from in-person to Zoom, because you'll see a Zoom presentation.
Got it.
Great, Joyce, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Wonderful, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kevin. Anyone else in the public portion to speak? I have a motion to close the public portion, oh, we got one more.
So we heard tonight, two applicants, both for graphic safety plan and for security funding. Question for the residents, does anybody feel that any of those ones are unaddressed? Any concerns?
You speak into the mic, please.
Sorry. The residents that are here, did anybody feel that there's concern to address by the plans that they presented?
So is that, sir, I'm sorry, is that a question for the board? This is, this is, this, this is a, a good welfare, and no disrespect at all, but this is a good welfare section where you should be bringing things up to the board, not, it's not for a session to interact with the public but outside of the board's participation. So I just wanna keep, keep, keep the rules of the meeting going with no new, no disrespect in it at all. That's my job to try to help us follow what we need to follow.
I appreciate it, too.
We heard both the plans. I feel they didn't address either the security or the traffic. I'd lost us to half the council, so they addressed it either of those things, knowing the traffic issues that we had.
We're not.
Sir, the board is imposed the duty to make a decision in the best of their building from the evidence that they heard, the testimony. If this board unanimously agreed to that, then they did their job. You might not agree, but that doesn't mean that they didn't consider everybody's testimony, the testimony, the concerns of the public. And once again, the board is obligated to do what the ordinance says. They don't have much latitude. That's why you heard me say, if you're satisfied at all the criteria, the conditions are met, you have to approve. If there's only one condition that you're not satisfied with, then you can, you can reject it. They apparently were satisfied that all the conditions were met, the criteria, based on what town council has approved and what's part of our ordinance. They don't have a lot of discretion.
It's, it's, it's one thing that a lot of, you don't usually hear it, but this is a quasi-judicial, quasi-judicial body, so they're acting as a, a.
Judge.
Judge in their facility here. So if the law says they can do this, they gotta follow those rules. If they don't, then they will be deemed by many, many case law examples arbitrary and capricious, and that means they are liable for doing wrong against the law. So that's why there's so many rules, and I know not everybody. I'm out here doing this stuff every night, so I know a lot of the rules. It is very, very new, and it is very complicated in the state of New Jersey, but the board can't act outside of the, the provisions of that the law provides them.
Correct. They might share the same opinions as the folks in the audience, but they can't, when, when they're sworn in, they say, we won't let my own opinion affect me. We'll follow the law of what our town says is required and what is permitted.
Yeah, we're, just what they're keep putting on, don't think we're hiding behind them. We have that same attitude on things, and if you research that, especially with zoning and planning work, you look into papers, Google it, I know a lot of people who are doing it. The people that come in front of us, they know everything. They're hiring professionals. We can deny it, and in two months, it's, it's overturned by a judge.
After a national lawsuit.
After a national lawsuit, and then we become personally liable because we didn't take the proper action of what's coming in front of us. Okay, so we are looking at it, we're scrutinizing everything, that's why we're paying professionals, engineer, and a solicitor to be a part of this, to scrutinize everything, so we're not here for twenty hours with them. They're doing it behind the scenes, so we can kind of, not streamline it, but have it, but they're showing us and telling us what they gotta meet. If they show us and tell us that they meet everything, we have to do what we have to do that way. So it's, it's hard for people that, when it comes into your neighborhood, you weren't aware of it, you know, for years, but we're trying to do our best. A lot of the concerns, unfortunately, how local government is, or even government, a lot of stuff is passed in newspapers, in the fine print, okay? It's by the law, it's by the law and everything, but that is between mayor and council. You need to take that to them, they'll listen to you. We're not trying to push it off either. If we can address it, we would, but it's just, it's telling you it's over the same thing again, but in layman's terms, we're not trying to do anything we can't do, and if we could do it, we would. Okay, so we are bound by the stuff, and it's hard to be up here and totally be neutral with certain things that come in. We understand, scan it, and it's like I said, we have professionals, make sure that we can, you know, try for the traffic and so forth, look at the lighting, look at noise barriers, we understand it. The safety aspect and so forth like that, that's on the police department and so forth. We have the same concerns, we have family members, kids, grandparents.
Residents of the private concern, but we also have to follow the law and get the best we can for all the residents of the private. Providing the laws that we have, that's what this board is.
The concern, concern of the law is that there, in the law is there's a two percent that money gets off the sales of whatever these.
This board can't talk about anything financial. We don't care what the applicant is making, what it costs the applicant. When we say that you're required to do a stormwater management system in accordance with the ordinance and H G P requirements, and he comes back and says, well, that's too expensive, that's gonna kill my deal, we don't, we can't even weigh that in consideration, that's nothing to do with the land use board. Land use board absolutely, by prescription, cannot take in economic, uh, attributes of an application into consideration. It's purely on the land use provisions of the application.
And so no way in shape reform that that two percent, but anyone's decision, like to validate, to proceed with the traffic.
Nothing to do with any deliberations of this board. We can't.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
We thank everybody for coming in.
And look on the website, the minutes of, and ordinances and resolutions of the borough are all on the website, right, Joyce?
Hi, yes, I wanna say.
Say your name.
I'm Suzanne Perez, fifty West Atlanta. And, um, is there any way there's better communication? Because I didn't know this until a couple days ago, and a lot of other people, and you're saying, look at the web. Nobody looks at the web. Like, do you have older people?
It is around, yeah, I think. So the municipal land use law, which is this book, all right, which I carry around to all my meetings, was, came up in nineteen eighty-five, and it says how planning boards have to operate. Also, there's state statutes on how municipal governments have to operate. There is a new book that looks like this every year, that is this fine print, which is all the case law that came out of this book. This book originally, my first copy, was almost like, like four pages stapled, and they added to this to make it this thing. So in these provisions, municipal land use law, it says very specifically what the notice requirements are, that has to be noticed in newspapers, noticed the residents within two hundred feet, how to get the two hundred foot list, how often it has to be in the paper for different things on a regular application once. And there's also case law that says when towns went over and above what was prescribed by the municipal land use law, then they took on an extra burden of responsibility, that, that now they are more in, uh, they're outside of their jurisdiction of actions. So even if we, even if we wanted to, even if we wanted to require an applicant, or even if the board wanted to issue their own newsletter or do this, we cannot, because it's already done.
So there's so many other people that don't know what's going on.
We cannot, we cannot, we cannot act outside, even though it makes sense, common sense, but if we do that, then we are not following the, the rules and the laws. And, and if there is case law out there about this, because other towns have had the same idea, and then it's been challenged, you know, so it's, it's.
I mean, I, I have a friend, a lot of people, there's not a lot of people that would just set my street.
In New Jersey, as we all know, is one of the most regulated states in the nation, and when it comes to land use law, we're probably maybe behind California. I don't know as much, but from what I read, we're, we're right up there with the boundary of regulations for land use.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, hopefully that helps. Glad to answer you, Rob, but hopefully not.
Good evening. My name is Kenzie Crosby, I live on Eight Creator Drive, that's in Washington, Washington. Thank you, first of all, for your time and your patience this evening. I have a question in regards to a term that was used quite a bit this evening, and I think, I could be wrong, but I think it applies to all three applications. There was a term that said nuisance, I think there was something after that, but it seems like from my end, that's acceptable term. Can you also define what that means, please?
I didn't mean that as a very specific technical term, I meant more as a general description.
Okay.
So then, anything that disturbs your peace, where they are operating, or any application is operating, where it is a nuisance to the general public, where it is operating outside of the provisions of any licenses or approvals that they are providing. So some people can say anything is a nuisance, you know, some people can say a sports bar is a nuisance, but if they're lawfully operating, then technically they're not reaching the level as being disruptive against our approvals. So I think it wasn't, it wasn't a technical definition, it was more of my, because I'm the one who kept saying it, but it's more of my, my generality of how that would work.
I appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Yeah, maybe thirty-nine left, please, again, just, I knew you guys followed the law, and I appreciate that. Just, I guess maybe this is for council, I don't know who does it, but the notification, and you put it in the paper, you went by the law, I understand that, but really, the Collins with retrospect? What is it? Who gets it? Like, who determines what newspaper goes in?
Mayor and council.
So that's something.
They adopted, they adopted by, by resolution at their reorganization meeting. It's the carrier or the retrospect.
Okay.
And we use the retrospect because it's so much cheaper than the carrier.
I get that, yeah, I thought I was saying, nobody gets it. Except maybe if you're in Collinsville, but looking around, I don't think we're in Collinsville. So, thanks.
Thank you.
Anyone else in the public portion to speak? Do I have a motion to close the public portion?
Motion.
Second. Motion made by Miss Cution, second by Miss Vannella. Do I admit a motion to close town's meeting? So, Jersey.
I make a motion to close.
Thank you, thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Motion made by Miss Vannella, second by Miss Cution. All favor of the Republican Party, patients and expertise.